We can start whenever Lisa feels like she's got. We know our two councilors are on their way there as well, a little hiccup with transportation, but we can start without them.
You have five percent. I'll leave that to you all.
I know that Jeanie said Tuesday she was out there and so did.
That's that question.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Since this is y'all's meeting, I'll let you call it and we'll then.
Mr. Murphy? Paige. I'm not going to get started then. All right, everybody, we'll call this meeting of the City Council to order. We have two other colleagues that will be joining us just in a few minutes, but they said to go ahead and get started so that we make sure that we get through this agenda.
And I will gavel the planning commission into work session.
All right, so I'm going to get us started if that's okay. And I believe I know everybody.
We have a call for both lines.
Mike Murphy, I'm the interim city manager. And we've talked a little bit about how to make good use of these three hours that are dedicated this evening and talk a little bit about that. So, but first, let's say who's at the table just for the benefit of the public since we have some name tags, but not all.
Mrs. Rice.
Oh, I'm Mrs. Rice. Paige Rice, Chief of Staff for the Council.
Lisa Green, Chair of the Planning Commission.
Jose Mitchell, Planning Commission.
Heather Hill, City Council.
Lyle Soliates, Planning Commission.
Hunter Smith, Planning Commission.
Jody Leandro, Planning Commission.
Kathy Galvin, City Council.
Mike Signer, City Council.
Okay, so.
Just really quick administratively, these are for, we don't.
This is only for the recording purposes. We are on Facebook Live. This is one of the things we're trying to do with work sessions now and community meetings.
So we should just try to talk towards the mics.
It should pick up ambient noise, but just try and speak up. We do have these folks to think about who want to hear what you say too.
Sure.
So, I want to start by just talking a little bit about the agenda and make sure that we're in agreement that this is a good way to conduct business tonight. We have three hours. The idea is that the discussion about the comp plan is about two hours of that time. And then item five down there is really for both folks at the table, but also from the audience here to give us some feedback. We're going to have the consulting firm that worked on our efficiency study and then the deep dive on NDS come back hopefully in the next month or so. And priming some questions for that session will help us to make best use of that time. And so when we messaged out this work session tonight, we sent a link to the NDS efficiency study, we won't do a whole lot of talking about what's in it, just take people's feedback about that so we're ready for that session. How we have framed the discussion for these next two hours is a series of questions that hopefully, I've had some discussion with some, but not all of you, will move us along. And I will try to, since we weren't able to have a facilitator tonight, you know, prompt you that maybe we've taken a little bit too much time on an item on occasion and see if we can move through the business. But really, the product is first here from Ms. Green about, hey, where have we been on the comp plan? And then to make some decisions, get some real timelines about where we're headed from here and decide important questions like, is this going to happen all at once? Could we approve chapters of the plan? Where does a comprehensive affordable housing strategy fit into this? And how are all these timelines going to work together, followed by a zoning rewrite? So, that all being said, is there anything that planning commissioners or councilors brought as an expectation for tonight that doesn't mix with this or we need to add?
When we.
Yes, ma'am.
When we get into the efficiency study, I know it's at the end, I wouldn't mind just a chance just to hear, just a little bit of an open conversation between, from planning commissioners and council on just how they want to be involved in that next step in that process when we do have a consultant come in, just so we can make sure that the appropriate folks are included when we get to that next step.
Okay.
Is that right?
I'm quite certain that we can provide some opinion since we're not short on that. However, seeing the agenda yesterday, I'm not sure all of us had enough time to go through
Sure.
and re-review. I know this came out in February, so.
And I'm just saying, all I'm saying is like, what manner would you like to be involved when we have this follow-up meeting? And what manner can we get feedback? Because we'd like to get feedback to the consultants prior to them coming so that they can have a chance to address some of that in advance and bring it prepared. So that's all. And we can talk about that when we get to it.
If I may add, I would, I would, when we get to that third hour, I would like to hear from the public though.
Absolutely, yes.
First and foremost.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay.
And the only other thing I was going to mention is that a week from tonight, we have a joint session with the Housing Advisory Committee. So some of these things are kind of happening in parallel. And so I'll share a little bit of perspective there, but we're going to get a full download from that committee with us next week. And are you always aware of that meeting?
Am I aware of it? We did?
Yes.
All right, so, welcome Mayor Walker, Dr. Bellamy, Ms. Green. Are you ready to give us a quick update?
And I will make this brief. Some of you have been to some of our sessions and have heard me speak way too often. We started the update in May of 2017. Y'all want to take a breath? You good?
No, we're good.
We started the update in 2017 and, in May, and we did two rounds of reaching out to the community. One, the first round was to go and set up meetings and talk in a very broad sense of what our comprehensive plan, what people wanted as far as, or, not necessarily what people wanted, but what they like about our city already and what they like about where they live. So we asked three questions and got some data. One was, where's your favorite place in the city? Where do you like to be on your time off? That kind of thing. Another one was, where would you see the best place for housing? And where would you see the best place for employment centers? And that was the first of our outreach. The second part of the outreach was less formal. We went to festivals and markets and different things of that nature. And we had a map of the city again with some magnetized things. And it was more about structure. What type of housing where do you think is most appropriate and what type of employment center where? It was less about the architectural design and more about a size and scale. That was the second phase. We sat down then for many, 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 many work sessions to work on our map and look at that data. We received data from online as well. And then we started taking a look at the map comprehensively, even though we were focusing a lot on land use. Simultaneously, the other chapters were being reviewed by chapter champions with the city staff. We were given an update on that last fall and had an opportunity to have some discussions about that. At this time, after last summer, as you all are probably aware, we had, kind of took a step back so that we could make sure our public felt heard. And we started getting a lot more input and having to take a lot closer look at really changing, or not changing, but really taking a hard look at our city and the land use and the comprehensive plan and community engagement, transportation, and a lot of the parts of the comp plan. And that is when we started talking about the housing study and deciding that we thought it would be a good idea to wait and hear some information on that housing study. We got, let's see, we, we still are working on the comp plan and the data. We got that housing study in February of this year. And we heard from a lot of the public. And we also felt that we needed more public engagement. And we started working about how, about how to go about doing that and still reaching more of a cross-section of our community as opposed to the same old, same old people that always come. And we had, in May, five, six, I don't know, I've had so many meetings, I can't remember. We had five or six different public engagements, again, to kind of give people an update of where we were at that time with what the information we had from the past, you know, since May of 2017. Those meetings, we did, still did, did not feel as if we had a good cross-section of representation of the community. We were missing definitely our more low-income residents, persons of color, and our younger population. We still did not have a great participation from those demographics population. So, we decided to get with some community leaders, which we did this past Tuesday, to say, what do we do? How do we reach different demographics, different population? How do we get people to have a meeting, to sit down? What is it the best way to do outreach? And we had that meeting on Tuesday.
Who'd you meet with?
Oh, gosh, we sent out, what, who do we meet with?
Who was, who was it to meet with?
There's a list.
These were leaders of all the major organizations in the culture, the NAACP.
Oh, and FAR. Here we go. Now, we sent out the invitation. We had about thirty people.
Forty RSVP, we had about thirty invitations went out to at least eighty groups. And there were a number of groups that contacted us from other contact.
Right. Does that answer? And so we got some, it was really good dialogue on Tuesday. And so that is where we are at this point. At this time, we are still, we had, we had, did ask for an extension because the original due date for us to turn the comprehensive plan over to you was June of this year. And we did ask for an extension. And it's my understanding that that was granted until December of this year. We, Mr. Murphy and I had some conversation today. And so I think that some timeframes is part of the discussion and direction from council. I mean, we can certainly share some of the things we heard and I would ask my colleagues to join in on some of those things. If that's where you want to, that's the information you want to hear. Definitely, it's an overpouring, you know, we hear overwhelmingly that the housing study should, our comprehensive plan should not be adopted without the housing strategy. Housing study was eye-opening. Nothing that we didn't know, but it definitely gave us the data that we were looking for as far as numbers. It wasn't surprising, just the numbers. Or maybe more than we thought.
Is it done?
Let me, I'll answer that. And the answer is no, it isn't done. The, I want to supplement what our chair has suggested by saying that we, the, a document should be in your hands for review by the end of this review, in the calendar year. About the end of December, it should be in your hands for review. But I, but even, even if we don't have the housing study and stuff, the housing input that we, that we need, because I, and this is just my opinion, but I, because I believe this should be a living, breathing document that can be revised as needed as we move on. The reason I feel a sense of urgency is we won't get to the zoning piece until we give you something. And the zoning piece is a piece that's going to address a lot of the difficulties that we've been dealing with. The zoning piece is a piece that's going to allow us to begin, begin to give some creative thought to, to affordable housing. So, I would urge you not, not to give us an extension. Because if you give us an extension, we'll just take that much more time to do it. Let us give you a living, breathing document that you can move on so that we can move on to zoning. And then we'll come back and iterate as we need to.
And that is absolutely true. And I think we're going to get into that as.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, we just got this today as well.
They've been purring this to me over and over again, I had to get it out.
Yeah.
Are you all still looking for input?
Well, we haven't had a chance to meet after our meeting on Tuesday. I mean, we're always looking for input. But I think that all of us were awaiting this conversation. I think we all have opinions for certain, or we wouldn't be on the planning commission. But I think we all have opinions and, and definitely it is not an easy answer to say where we are. Absolutely, without the comprehensive plan, having something to you all to look at and us to have a direction, that is true. It is going to be very hard to do the zoning piece of this. And it is true that the zoning piece is where it's going to need to take place in order to get the things that we're all looking for. So.
So, Mr. Bellamy, to answer your question, yes, we are still looking for input. From that leaders' meeting, we need to have a discussion on how we're going to move forward to get the information of the demographics that we're looking for, for that input.
Part of the problem is those aren't the leaders.
Well, Mr. Bellamy, we had several people come to us.
Yeah, I'll be.
I, I understand. We have had several people come to meetings and tell us and very vocal about, you're not reaching the right people, we're not reaching the right people. And in a council chambers one night because of our, our work session, we said, okay, tell us who to reach, tell us who to reach out to. If these are not the right people, and if we don't, then we're going to make it up. We're going to make up the things. And I think we got from that meeting one contact. So we're not reaching the right people. We asked the question, if this isn't the right people, then tell us who the right people is. And if not, we're going to have to make something up. We put the call out again. We got one person, give us one name. And that's, there are also a few other people that I reached out to who may not be on that
list that, that to me were different community leaders, but I don't know if they RSVP because I don't have the RSVP list.
I think overall, just community outreach as a whole, we've got to city-wide take a look at what we're doing. We do the same old thing over and over. So do we need resources? Do you need resources for that, to get the kind of assistance to? Well, what came out of the meeting? Well, what came out of the meeting is we need to go to the people. And the people don't trust government. And I'm not going to be popular with you all, but I'm just going to say it, I typically speak my mind anyway. And it doesn't matter anyway if we're following the comp plan and you guys override our decision, it won't matter. So there's a lot of distrust. This is not something y'all don't hear every Monday. There's a lot of distrust. And so, is it, you know, we need to do, we need to do different things than, this is my opinion now, and I think this is what we heard, and please, we need to do different things than say, okay, everybody come to city space, or everybody come to NDS chambers, or everybody come to, we need to do different ways of communicating other than just sending out a press release. We need to do, you needed the plug. Did y'all fight?
No, I needed a plug.
We just need different ways of reaching out. We need to use all the social media outlets. We've got to find a way to reach our young folks. And I'm not so sure that putting a map down and, you know, we heard that land use, and while a lot of us speak the language, we need to find a better way to communicate in, in more common terms as opposed to just planning lingo.
Well, that was the point Wes was just making with me is that these people are right that we didn't get, but he's suggesting that we're not getting the younger folks there. And my retort was, we can't get them to come, we've been trying to get them to come for months. And his retort was, well, go to them, so.
And that's, that's what we heard. We heard a lot of that.
A lot, a lot of the other suggestions that came from the meeting Tuesday, which I thought we, I think we were in consensus and thought were good suggestions, were to do multipurpose meetings, so not just to have a meeting about the comp plan, to go to different areas where they may already be having a meeting and then ask if we can piggyback off of that. Two other key important elements were childcare and food. And being a single parent, I know that makes a huge difference. If I have to worry about dinner and who's going to keep my kid, I'm likely to not to show up.
The, the only point that I will reiterate and I'll do it over and over again tonight is that we can continue to do the outreach, but this needs to come to an end so that we can get you guys a document so that we can move on to the bigger problem, which is the zoning piece. I don't want to see us talking to people still till the end of the, end of the calendar year. Can you hear that again, by the way?
So, again, I just want to, and I appreciate the, the connection between the comp plan and the zoning and the urgency. And I appreciate the revelation, the understanding of the need for the more in-depth onsite outreach. I know that takes time and resources. And we have, the NDS staff is stretched and it's all falling on you individuals to actually do a lot of the work. And I, I'm going to ask again, because it was something way back when in the September 2016 work plan, it said, if you need resources, let us know. And I don't, I, I hear Mr. Mitchell's call for discipline. Do we keep everything as it is and everybody keeps muddling through somehow? Or do we keep the deadline, but then put resources into this? I know we've got a model working with Ebony Walden, working with members of Click within a subsection of SIA. That is, can that give us any models, any, any examples of how in-depth we need to be? Because it sounds like that is going onsite and it is having very, very, very informed conversations with the residents of, of public housing and friendship court. So is that, if we need that level, then we do need more resources.
I don't think it's resources, I think it's relationships.
Absolutely. But presence means relationships.
Well.
Right? That's how you form the relationships.
Nah, because you can be seen as like your presence, just like you're here because you want something, not because you're here because you care, or here because you know me. So it's like, we show up at the barber shop and we just come to the barber shop and we're like, well, hey, we want to ask you all these questions about, what do you think about the city? People may be like, why would I answer these questions for you? Opposed to if there's a relationship there or there's a conduit of sorts who are saying, hey, these are my friends, can you, you know, let's talk to them for a little bit about what's going on. And then I think we also have to keep in mind that I, I run into this issue, like I hear this issue sometimes that we often equate black folks with like low-income neighborhoods. There's a lot of people, specifically people who are black, who live in our community, who live outside of Friendship Court, West Haven, Sixth Street, and they out and they do a lot of different things. So it's like building that bridge, but I mean, what's the, what, like, why would someone who's probably my age come to this meeting?
I think, I mean, I think that's exactly.
We come in, like, if I came in here and like, I'm not on council and I just looked at the room and then just looked at the people here, like, I would much rather probably be doing something else.
Well, that's the catch, that's the catch 22 is that what we're up against is that we've got, you know, a pretty not comprehensively reflective set of data and frankly, a pretty, I don't want to say uninteresting, but like, uninteresting subject, no offense to us.
Yeah, well, I think you're hitting on something else.
So I think there has to be two things. One, if the targeted population is people of color or younger folks, I think there are groups like I didn't see on that list, like the Black Professional Network. Or I saw ATF, they're about to have a mixer. I know that's coming up, but there was no contact. EB is Terry Wilson.
Well, I'd ask you why you didn't weigh in when we asked this information.
I don't even remember getting in.
BPN was on the list. We met and, and looked for.
So.
For contact.
Well, BPN is about to have a interest meeting, I think, in two weeks. That would be a place. Radio station, I mean.
And that's what we've discussed a lot in the, in the PC work sessions has been, we, we're going to have to get out and go, not to our own events, but like Ms. Hudson said.
Like, like, it was probably like 200 people there Sunday for the championship of the games. Like, this would have been.
To that, to that point though, like you mentioned about the barber shop, like if we're there with a presentation, how much engagement? I'm just, I think we need to be creative about.
I don't think you go with a presentation, I'm sorry, Coach.
Well, no, that's exactly it. I'm like, what we typically do or have typically done, which I haven't been involved with for very long at all, so. I'm like, what we typically do, or have typically done, which I haven't been involved with for very long at all, so, just from an outside perspective, I'm trying to think what we can be communicating to get more feedback on the answers we're looking for in a way that's not so, I'll use the same word since I've already used it already, uninteresting, right?
So, I think it's a talking to, so I think of his image barber shop, right? Where Mr. Murphy and I both go and get our hair cut at the same place.
Obviously.
But I think, no, we actually do. So, I think it's a, it's a, it's a nice mix of different people. And I think going in there and saying, you know, can we come in and not have our clipboards and say like, we want to collect this data, but maybe coming in and being unconventional with maybe something just like being recorded on your phone and saying, we want to spend a couple hours and just listen to people as they come in and ask some questions. Or we want to just sit in and ask the barbers, can y'all ask the questions for us? And we, I mean, we have conversations in there about all kinds of stuff all the time. There's like 15 barber shops throughout the city. Talking to someone like Damian Banks and asking, you know, maybe willing a partner to do something in some capacity. I mean, people like Rico Hearn's. Like, there, there are different ways, but we, yeah.
Well, if you feel any better, Mr. Banks was invited to the community leaders' meeting. There were several other, in my opinion, key people who I asked on Facebook who they felt were community leaders that I personally invited. I gave them the time, info, and date. And like I said, I don't know if they RSVP'd or not and just didn't show up, but they were invited.
Yeah, so I hear you and I feel you. I like, I appreciate the effort that's being made, but it's like, why didn't we go to the game?
Well, maybe because, I don't know.
Not you, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying in general. But I also feel like too, Mr. Bellamy, you're in that mix, you're in that scene. And whether you're on the planning commission or city council, you still got a task to do. So, knowing this information, and you knew we had this meeting coming up, why didn't you present it to them?
I didn't, to be, to be honest.
Okay, so we both did. Evidently, they were contacted once again.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't? Well, I mean, it's a two-way street.
I'm just being honest, like, I didn't, honestly, I didn't know what was going on with the comp plan, like outreach. I didn't know. It just wasn't something that was high on my priority list, just me being completely honest and transparent.
And I think we're fine, and that's the issue with the demographic that we're looking for. But we have to come up with some way to make it more important on our priority list.
And that's the question, I mean, are we really communicating to the community why this vision document is so important? And how it relates to the zoning and why the zoning affects their lives so much? Is that being discussed that way?
I don't think it's an intuitive thing to.
It's not intuitive, but that's why you got, I think you're right. You got to, and I'm just throwing this out there, like, because I, just knowing what, you know, you can't talk in terms of a concrete plan, but what do you want the city to be like? That's the vision, right? And I think you were asking that at the very first meeting.
We've asked that at every workshop we've had.
It's just not that straightforward.
That's right.
Because we are in, we're at a watershed moment in our community. And we're, this, we have two processes going on. One is a straightforward every five years, state mandate, you review a comprehensive plan. And another, we have a community dialogue and struggle about who talks to whom and how do they talk to them and where can they talk to them. And a comp plan has been tangled up in that. It hasn't been any secret that we were doing a comp plan. Obviously, people who are trying to make a living and take care of their families and deal with a lot of other issues, it's not high on their priority list, so they're not coming to meetings. But when leaders have reached out to us and we've reached out to leaders, some of them have sort of used this as political hot potato in football to reach other goals, which are admirable goals, but they've kind of kept this process from moving along. So, I'm just going to make a radical statement.
So, can you give an example?
Yeah, well, early on, like, gosh, 18 months ago perhaps? An invitation went out from NDS. I'm not sure exactly who was on the list, but a number of nonprofits and other groups that work with low-wealth communities were asked to come to help plan this process, and I think three showed up. And actually, a person at the meeting said, well, we came to check this out and we will, we will monitor and screen, and then we'll see whether we think the people that we serve should participate or not. So, there's kind of been a barrier, you know, as to reaching people. And, you know, so then there was the other outreach last, a few days ago. And the people who are primarily either staff or board members who came to that meeting, I mean, they're all just like us. They're all college-educated, professional people, you know? So, there's been this barrier to getting to the people. And as Wes said, you could go to the barber shop and you could go other places, but that's going to be a different process because we can't go to all the barber shops or beauty salons or whatever in the, in the city, or churches, or the food bank. I mean, it's, it's a complicated thing. And it might be that we just can't do that right now. And I've been saying for several months that maybe we just have to say that's part of the implementation. Because we're not in a good place right now, but maybe we're on our way to getting to a good place. You know, and we, as one staff person said a few days or weeks ago, we've actually met our state mandate. We've reviewed the comprehensive plan. And all the state says we have to do is review it every five years. So, we could say we've reviewed it. And there are a lot of things we know. We need more community engagement, we need different community engagement, we need to take a comprehensive look at our zoning. We know that we have an affordable housing issue, we know that we have a general housing issue. We knew that before the study. But there were people in this community who wanted to tie up the comp plan and delay the process, so they waived the housing study. Oh, you can't finish the, the comp plan until you do the housing study. So, everything got delayed again. So, why don't we just say we've reviewed the comp plan? Let's do a one-page document that has about 10 points, and then over the years, we will try to implement all of these things. And I would suggest we do an annual check-in.
Let me encourage you all to hit pause here, as somebody who said, I try and move you along on a couple of occasions, now might be one of those. We're about a third of the way through the time that we said we'd spend on this tonight. And I want you to think about, you know, while we're having some good discussion, how you're moving yourself along. It is true that you have met the state mandate, and that is one of the points that we have to put before you tonight. The question is, if it is both the councils, the communities, and the planning commission's goal to eventually to get to a zoning rewrite, then you're going to have to approve sections of the plan that are not really in revisions of draft right now. It's my understanding that there are four chapters of the seven that are pretty much ready to come to the council within the next few months. The question really before you that all these questions lay out and prompt really is, do you believe that you want to present all seven chapters at once? Regardless of whether you think that that comes with or without an affordable housing strategy, comprehensive affordable housing strategy? Or is now the time to approve those four chapters and talk about, at the same time, moving along this comprehensive affordable housing strategy so that you can then also bring to council the housing, land use, and third one? Community engagement chapters.
Mostly chapters are pretty much ready.
Okay.
The most important chapter is the one that we've been doing the outreach on, and that would be the land use chapter. And we can't, we can't get to the zoning until land use.
So, this is, I just want some clarification because the comprehensive plan is a set of goals and objectives. We've got the housing study that can clearly begin to tell us what our goals are, 3,300 units. Every comp plan should have an implementation section. And I said this recently to some folks, our comp plans have not been having their implementation sections developed for the last two comp plans. That's hurting us.
That's what we mean.
Zoning is an implementation tool. The housing production strategy is an implementation tool. Those are the two that need to get out into the hinterland, place by place, communities center by community center. And, but you can't move in that area to get the specifics, the stuff that really acts, like on the ground, until you get the goals right. And, and the goal language, it seems like you're pretty close with what you got from the housing study. The strategies are what, are a whole slew of them that need to be discussed. But I, I think gumming up your implementation strategies with your comprehensive plan, which is an aspirational document, is hurting this process right now. I think you're closer than you think you are.
I'm going to simplify. I think some of the things that's hurting our process, and again, I am not trying to be argumentative, but how many of council knows what this is and have seen this? And if you all don't know what this is, and we can't get it, get you to understand what it is, and we can't, then how do we expect the public to understand what it is?
So, does everybody understand why the comp plan is important and how it relates to zoning?
Exactly. And so, you know, and that's, that's, in my mind, that's even more simple. So, we can do this all day long. And, and some of us have, and for our three new members, while I know you guys are ready to push it on, I dare say the number of hours we have put in on this would alarm you. And, you know, maybe some of those hours should have been beating pavement. But the reality is, we, you know, we have met and met and met and met. And I am going to ask Missy to put that together. I think you all should know that. So, then to come in, I'm sorry, Mr. Bellamy, and say, well, why didn't you do this, why didn't you do that? When we did send that out and ask for input, and now with no input from you at this point, I'm not sure how that helps this situation. And so, you guys, y'all need to understand what this is too. And if, I will happily sit down, I will volunteer my time, if you guys want to sit down and I'll run through the presentation with you all separately if you want. I'll do it individually if you want. Because that is the, you know, it's not going to matter what kind of implementation strategies we put in place. We can change zoning all day long. Once we get it put in place, if we move it forward, we get all the public outreach and we do the zoning, if it's not followed, it's not worth the paper it's put on. We do some, we do small area plans, and if it's not followed, it's not the paper we put on. It's just not. So, if y'all don't know what it is when y'all are looking at the things and you still are going, wow, that's a great guy in front of me, let's do that, instead of following this, then it doesn't matter. And I'm sorry, I'm as aggravated as you are for a different reason.
And I'd like to point out too. I'd like to point out too, we have heard from, during public comment from a number of individuals and organizations that we should not be finishing up the comp plan until the housing strategy is finished. And that housing strategy is going to go through a public engagement part all its own, and that could be, you know, six months to a year. But there is public sentiment that is telling us to wait for that.
Is it a fear that it won't be done if the comp plan's finished? It's a fear that that won't get done, and that's why investing resources to assist the planning commission to get the strategies done for housing and to assist to get the zoning changed? Because Jose is right, the zoning is a critical tool for the implementing reform in the housing arena.
What, what, you ask us if we need resources? I, I'm not so sure my, what do you suggest? Tell me, tell me some suggestions, I mean.
I remember a while ago when I was asking when we had the year-end surplus, and I sent a little notice out. It was like, how many, $9 million that we had left over?
But what does it look like to you?
So, I'm, I'm thinking it's, it's, you bring in some folks with expertise in affordable housing that know how to turn policy into operational action items. They know how it relates with zoning. You bring folks in that know how to turn comprehensive plans into zoning. That's a technical, but also an engagement piece. People that have done this in other cities, and get them working side by side with you and us. We need, we need to have some other resources, that's what I mean. Not just, not just an intern from UVA, not just a, somebody extra to do more mapping on the side. Because I know the graphics have been a challenge for you to get right. You need a professional team of people that have, are really committed to equity and sustainability in, in terms of a community's vision plan and how it translates into zoning and, and kind of implementation strategies. That's what I, what I'm hearing and seeing.
And specifically, just to parallel, the Housing Advisory Committee is putting together both a timeline and an estimate of cost for the resources that they believe for the housing portion of it are going to be needed to accomplish the housing strategy at the end. That's just obviously one component of this. But I think that, I agree, I think that that path forward needs to be even broader than just housing as we try to really make sure that we get this done right.
Right, and breaking up into chapters means it's not comprehensive.
Can I take a swing at the resources idea?
Yeah.
Because I think, if it's being put out there, I think there's a way to utilize that suggestion and maybe implement Dr. Bellamy's suggestion. And maybe we use resources to compensate community advocates that live and work in the communities that we're trying to reach. And instead of asking everyone up here that's on a volunteer basis and asking folks in the community on a volunteer basis to magically meet, even though there's mistrust of government and we don't have enough data, I think we should deploy resources into paying people who live and work and communicate in the sectors that we're not reaching to help us get that information in an honest and candid method. And nobody's asked, being asked to do it for free.
Right.
And you can hopefully find a way to get to the information we need by having people pay for their time and having them be a trusted way to ask the questions that we need to get answered.
And that's a, that's a real progressive enlightened community engagement strategy that people like Aliz Ogbu, like, know. That would be, I mean, you still need a point person that knows how to get her done.
Sure.
And would Ebony's group be a good group to be the point?
I don't know. It could be, one good example from that experience is bring a group of people from the community together to give a list of potential groups, consultant teams. That's how we got moving forward with that small piece of rezoning in the SIA. I think there are ways to both include the community in that level of decision-making as well as the community to, with, with being paid to get out into the, into the community to find the information we need, so.
Didn't we have a consultant, gosh, not that long ago, come in and do a comprehensive review of our zoning?
I don't think so.
We were sitting at CitySpace. It must have been many years ago and many moons ago.
Two years ago, in here, we had that same conversation.
No, we had a conversation, ours was at City, I mean, at Water Street.
Oh, ours was at CitySpace. I remember having that conversation.
The last time that was done was 2003.
Reviewed the zoning? He looked at us as there.
Oh, that was a two-day.
Oh.
Technical assistant that we got a free, we got a grant from Smart Growth America. And for whatever reason, they were instructed to only work on lighting.
No, 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 this is something different.
It was a real missed opportunity, but.
Yeah, nothing ever changed. They did address some issues.
They, they, they came right out and said, your zoning is way out of whack with your comp plan.
Exactly.
They knew that. They said, you got to do this wholly, whole, whole clock.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was back in 2015, 2014.
We heard that too from the public last Tuesday night is that if we're going to sit here and meet, don't have us meet, 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 and then nothing, have nothing to show for it. They want to see some results. So, we did hear that as well.
So, the thing is, I just want to just get out there before it's, I lose it. The zoning we have now, 2003 zoning, was born out of conditions from the 1990s when this city was economically depressed and plummeting in revenue. So, the zoning we have is quite frankly on steroids. And it was kind of off-the-shelf zoning, just to meet certain targets because it was responding to economic conditions that are now way outdated. So, we've got a zoning ordinance that is honored more in the breach than in actual use. People, the owners are coming in with rezoning requests and special use permits. Talk about time suck. And no one is doing their job well because they're always focusing on, you know, a workaround. So, this, this is hurting us financially, but it's hurting us as a community because this zoning doesn't reflect the values of today.
That's right.
Well, if we, if we want to address some of the infrastructural oppression, you know, we can't, every application that comes in today, based on the code today, is going to be grandfathered. And so, until we do anything to change the zone and rewrite it. And I understand that the amount of time that's been put in and the lack of desire to rush it completely. But I think that that should be. it completely. But I think that that should be in the public realm, understanding at least some of the well-intended desire to move ahead with the zoning rewrite, because until we do, any Tom, Dick, and Harry that comes along with the plan and gets it approved, it's gonna sit there, and we're gonna talk about where we put affordable housing, and we're not gonna have any land lands.
Well, my question is, um, question C. So, the council, does the comprehensive plan need to be done as a whole, or do you mind getting it in parts? Cause I think that's gonna be our starting point here. Cause until this is done, we can't move on to zoning. So, let, what do you, what do you want?
But what, what parts do you feel have to be done in order to even do that? Cause are there some zoning stuff that can be done without a final land use and housing chapter?
Well, I think that direction should come from you. What do you want? I feel like we're getting...
Right.
Excuse me. Oh, no, not you, I'm sorry. But I'd like to hear from my mayor or a vice mayor, like, would you prefer to only get pieces that, um, or wait on the pieces that have to do with zoning, or would you prefer a whole package? I think that's our starting point.
And let me just supplement that before we answer, by offering just another way to think about it. And this, again, could be a living, breathing doctrine that we iterate as the iteration is necessary.
Yeah, so, from my understanding, and I am one of those people who have met, I met with Lisa, got my book, went through it with her, and I'm still, will say that I'm in the learning phase of, of this, is the, so my first question to, is the community engagement piece, the, what's holding up the rest of? So, what's holding up the other two chapters that are incomplete?
We just felt like we didn't have as much cross-sectional data of the community that we wanted to, to, and, and we're still looking at, even the information we got is still some of that very similar to the 1950s map that we saw. And so, we're hearing a lot. And so, while we're looking at that, and I think we, as a commission, again, we just finished our meeting Tuesday. We hadn't had time to sit back down, and that's, that's coming up. We have another meeting Tuesday, and then, who knows? I, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to talk 'em into many more additional meetings at this point. But I think we've gotta really take a look at it as well, and, and really start to nail down, maybe some of that is, we need to just look at it without some of the input from the data, and take a look at the overall understanding of where we really need to, to focus on the city, as opposed to, so, I mean, that's one way to look at it. However, I think all of us wanna, we wanna make sure that, that the community feels heard.
So, the housing strategy, where is that?
Well, we'll hear more about that next week. But, um, there's a timeline on that, and I know that there's been an ask for it in early 2019, but I think realistically, it's more in the end of the first quarter, second quarter, more in the middle of the year, to be really realistic about when that can be fully delivered.
Now, there are ways to do that too. We did this with the small area plans and SIA. There are ways to put in the comprehensive plan that there is a, that, and we wrote this in the 2013, I think, and then we did an update. We, we're, so in the housing chapter, you could say, uh, we are in the middle of a housing strategy, and, uh, this will be inserted at this place.
And be attended to the document.
And then we amend the comp plan and add that to the comp plan.
The question is though, how much, so I, how much of the zoning rewrite is, is independent of a housing strategy being completed?
It's critical. But housing in 2009 is critical.
That's what I'm saying. Like, these things kinda have to go in parallel.
So, that's why even just getting us a draft, a whole draft of all the chapters, maybe think of it that way. Just give us a draft to respond to.
Well, you wouldn't be able to, if the community engagement piece hasn't, so, my next question to try to get to an answer, having an answer, the, do you all, so the planning meeting, I think I came to the first one at Carver.
Gosh, that was a long time ago.
Um, and so, the, how would this, um, how do, how do you take that presentation out? So, when you all have gone out into the community, what, how has it set up?
Well, it depends on, cause we've had three different presentations. The first one, where we had our map, and looked at the city and asked for dots, and, and the overall broad questions, cause it wasn't, you know, hey, design the city. It's like, what do you like about the city? We wanna know what people liked, and, and what, where they liked to be, and, and what they liked about the city. And we got a lot of good answers. We got community. We heard a lot about community. And so, we, we got a lot of that input from the first phase. And then the second phase is, we wanted to, uh, that went out more with this magnetized board, where we had people put stuff and take a picture. And it was more about form, I guess you could call that. It was, it was like, you know, again, don't pay attention to the architecture, cause it was very cartoonish kind of things, you know, single-family house, or a multi-story family building, etc. And where would this, where do, where would you see this being, uh, where would you see this, uh, what was the question, Jody? What is the, this type of housing, where would you see this as the best fit in the city?
Yes, we had different levels of housing. We had different levels of commercial, resident, uh, well, commercial. And then we asked them to take, pick three, um, without knowing which three they picked, and then put them where they thought they should, that should happen in the city.
And at that point, the conversation was, we were, again, there was a point in time prior to last summer, where a lot of the conversation was people saying, "We don't want our city to grow." And so, we wanted to see, not, the question we were trying to say is, okay, look, this city's growing, we need housing. We know this then. And then the community kinda caught up and, and started, you know, very much crying out. Again, and so then, it was a different, there was a different communication to us. But, but before that, we were definitely hearing from the people who were coming out, for sure.
And that's a good thing, though.
That, that, "We don't want the city to grow. We're good where we are. Stop building irises. We're putting your magnets outside our boundaries."
We did that, we had that as well.
So, a fuller representation of that first series of six workshops that we did was, it started off with Tania and I giving a, uh, a presentation on what a comprehensive plan is, describing it as best as we can, and then talking about how we wanted to focus this, this workshop section in, on places, and what places meant, and not just places that you like, but places that were memorable and for other reasons. And then we broke it up into work tables. From the very, Lisa's just said, or been saying, we started May of seventeen. We actually started in January of seventeen, by start talking about how we're gonna plan, what we're going to do, and what we wanted to do. And it was our belief and, and our, um, firm, uh, belief, I'll say it again, of that we needed to hear it ourselves. That we didn't wanna hire a consultant to come in and, and meet with the people, and then report back to us. We wanted to talk to them ourselves, and we wanted to talk to them in small groups. We wanted to break it down into tables, and have a commissioner at each table, and hear for themselves what people had to say, and have a conversation. And maybe we were wrong, and, and that, that kept us from limiting how much we heard. But I still feel like that has benefited us tremendously to get this information ourselves.
And I'm certainly not meant to suggest that, but when you get into the more technical level, are you gonna be able to rewrite the zone?
No. No, I, but don't we have to have the, well, what we, what we've collected so far, don't we have to bring that to an end, and then get the consultants in to turn it into zoning and implementation?
I mean, that would be ideal. But again, I think, you know, it's, if you need resource, resources to get the childcare and the daycare, and there might be more things.
Just, uh, just listening to a lot of such, just to offer a thought, which is, if we're stuck at this chicken and egg problem of not ever being sure if we've had enough community engagement to feel like we really hit enough at the front end on general questions, maybe we could, maybe the plan can be drafted, and then it could be shopped out to the neighborhoods. Because where we have had the most success, I mean, this, this conversation here is very similar to ones we've been having for years about, why don't people pay more attention to, like, this debate we could have on any number of issues affecting the city, that we need to get full impact from lots and lots of people, full community engagement. Why don't more people come? Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. We get a ton of people to our out-town, our town meetings. Those, those are probably the most successful community engagement that city council does, because we go into the neighborhood, and it ends up being a couple hundred people, usually ninety-eight percent of the comments are about super local issues, like they are, and a lot of the time it gets kind of repetitive, because it's traffic or shrubs. But on the other hand, that's what people are really, that, you know, when they live in Charlottesville, they're looking at their block, and they're looking down the street, and they're looking in the neighborhood. And, and our neighborhoods are diverse, because that's where the full body of people live. So, maybe you could just do the plan, take it out to fifteen neighborhoods, make sure that the neighborhoods are very diverse, and that it's cited appropriately, and then expect, and be like, "Look, this is the draft," and have it framed so that it's a draft. We are looking for feedback. It can change in a number of different ways. It could impact your lives in fifteen different major ways. If this plan goes through, hey, Fifeville, this, you know, this would change Fifeville in these fifteen different ways. So, come and tell us what you think, and have that communicated in plain language, which is a good practice, you know, so it's not like R2, 12. It'll be like, there will be more development in your neighborhood. There will be, heights will be cut, and have staff translate it, and then say, "We want your feedback," and the plan can change based on what you say. But, so it wouldn't be general principles for the whole city. It'd be like, you know...
But, but I can tell you what you're gonna hear there, cause I, I've worked in local government and zoning for the last seventeen years, and I'm gonna tell you, that needs to go over there, cause we like our neighborhood, just like it is. That's what we're gonna hear. I mean, we've even heard it from some of the outreach right here. Wait, why did you, why is this darker here? Why does this show height? And everybody's like, "Well, that's where I live, so let's..."
I disagree. I mean, I was the head of a neighborhood association. There was a lot of dynamism inside that neighborhood about, do you want, do you want dwelling units? Do you want, you know, how, what, what are the rules of setbacks? Like, like, there was a lot of dynamism. How many parking spaces we associated? Do you want more houses? Do you wanna have more, like, there's, how are curbs? How are trees? All, I, I think that there was, I, I wouldn't characterize it just that statically, and say, "It's just gonna be, no, 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 no. There's not gonna be any input that would come in."
I'm not saying, but I, we're talking a little bit different issues than the curbs and the trees, and the, I mean, parking is a part of it, but I mean, we're, we're really talking about changing some density.
Sure.
Increasing some density, and, and, I mean, we're talking some, some potential major changes in some of these neighborhoods.
But you're gonna get that opposition at some point, so you might as well...
But I think that's where the information about the housing needs from the study, housing study, is really important to package and present. Cause this is also a community that does want to do the good, wants to get the affordable housing right. And I think, understanding the trade-off between, and, 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 and that whole discussion about where does the intense stuff go, and where does, where do the more accessory dwellings go? Where's that missing middle go? That's a way to get that conversation going in a way that's not so frightening. There's, there's options. It's like, so take what you've got already, but apply it now to solve a problem, i.e. affordable housing.
It is time to have a professional zoning review and analysis. And I don't really see how you're gonna move the future land use map forward without that. We've said over and over, future land use is not zoning, but you need to analyze the existing zoning in light of the, the housing study and other information that we have to be able to move it forward. And, and, just to let me finish, is, is a couple of nights ago, when we met with the representatives of, of the, of the groups that we reached out to, most of them said, you, to get somebody to, to come and work with you, they need to feel some sort of urgency and crisis. And I, and I tell you, if you start talking about, you know, raising heights and increasing density, and putting this there and that there, some people will feel a little bit interested, or possibly alarmed, and we will get a little more engagement. But I just don't see how we do it without that external professional review. And it takes the, it takes the local politics and the local personalities out of it. We might not agree with all of that, and then that's where you do have a local input. But it's not us saying, you need, you know, high-density, tall housing in Greenbrier, or, or whatever. I, I just don't see how you move it forward without doing that.
And that's even, that's even before you rewrite the zoning. You gotta understand where the disconnect is.
Yeah, yeah. We need that review.
So, the community engagement piece, that, is there a, um, presentation that the planning commission can put together that can be a door-to-door, pop in a barber shop? Like, what would that look like? Um, have you all thought about, so what would you take into, because if that can be created, then I can work with, um, the planning commission to get a team of people together that can figure out a strategy to reach people that we haven't reached. But I'm just thinking back to, um, the presentations that I've seen, what I've seen on the news, what has been sent out, and you can't really take that, um, and do a door-to-door, or walk, walk to someone while they're sending a cheer. So, what would that look like?
It came up a few weeks ago, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, you can go.
I was just gonna say, they came up, came up a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, in a planning commission session, and there was concern that, that we don't wanna take something so important and be perceived as, as dumbing it down.
Well, I don't think, so this is my email to council and the city manager and NDS director from 2017, started with, "I suspect that there will be a great disconnect between the individuals who came up with the comprehensive plan 2018 in Charlottesville, most vulnerable population. The questions didn't answer the current lack of access or affordability that exists, but assumes that individuals will have the mental space to be creative, take ownership, and design future spaces. Growth isn't an option. It's gonna happen, but there was zero discussion about community input, about curbing gentrification. Concerns about the questions. Question one, most of the individuals at my table mentioned downtown mall, X Park, Frost Springs area, JPA. If you visit these places frequently, you know that they are segregated. Question two assumes that there are places that you like, that... Question three assumes that you go to places within the community. I would suggest asking if there are places that you don't frequent, would you frequent, and why? Question four and five, does it make sense to pe, to ask people who don't feel a sense of agency about where development should be focused? It would be helpful to list areas in town that could possibly be developed as a conversation starting point. The focus is on, is on new developments when we currently have a housing crisis. Will all individuals feel like new developments are being constructed for them? What types of house would you like to live in? The diversity that you all are claiming you are seeking will not view these questions, they will not view these questions as sensitive to their needs. My first thought, I would like to have an option, as in a physical location to live in in Charlottesville. Asking about housing type is a misconception. Question six and seven, I would like, I would ask, what employment sectors would you like to have located within the city limits? If individuals are holding on to the idea of occupations that are obsolete, that information would be helpful. There was a developer planning commissioner who worked for a developer, a forty, uh, former city staff member who currently works for a developer, a Greenbrier Neighborhood Association member, that those, that two was sitting at my table. The member who gave our report neglected to voice any of the concerns that I shared with the group in the process. I said, "The staff member Heather," with a question mark, I thought that was her name, it was, "was attentive to my concerns and appeared to understand them." And I spoke with Allison after the meeting. Um, so I know that feedback is a challenge when you feel as if you're barking on a new process. I didn't feel the innovation that staff members and commissioners expressed. So, I sent that after the first meeting that I went to. Um, and attempting to figure out from what I remember from that meeting, and what I've seen, if you're talking about community engagement, one of the main things that has to happen is, you're gonna, it's not a dummy down that's gonna have, you know, you're gonna have to figure out, um, how to make sure that people understand, um, what they are looking at. So, it goes back to what you're saying about taking the, um, the lingo that you all are very comfortable with out of the equation. And if you are not, if, if you are not gonna have tables to set, you know, sheets on, for people to come up and place things on, then there has to be a method that you still can show people what you're talking about, and then talk to them about it wherever they are. And if that can happen, then I can help with the piece of, um, getting... getting to the people. So I will commit to doing that if there can be something created that I can use to, to talk to people.
To, on Ms. Walker's point, like as she was saying it, I was thinking, and I know it seems like, one, I apologize because it seems like the process is almost over and then we're coming in. I hear you all, like after reflecting, like, well, y'all didn't say all of this earlier and I sense that frustration and I respect it. But then just hearing Ms. Walker, I may have walked her, excuse me, is it possible to have like a, a trying document maybe you can have on an iPad that you can explain in a one pager, two pager to folks, like, this is what we're doing. Here's some of the key points. And then record conversations in regards to, you know, what do you think about X, Y, and Z?
It could also be made into a pretty simple app that collects the data itself instead of having to record the feedback to the.
Right. Because I mean, everyone always has their phones and, hey, let me show you this. This is what we're doing. What do you think about that? And then you just press record literally. So you don't have a quick conversation about it. Where would you like to live or, you know? Do you feel included? So forth. It's maybe a five or ten minute thing.
But I think that where would you like to live? That's us. They would like to live somewhere, which is currently not an option for a lot of people.
Well, I was literally just telling the question, but I mean, you can ask.
But even if it's just questions, like how do we change? Because even the questions that we were asked, you know, in this email that I just found, it was hard for me. I wouldn't have been able to go and translate that to someone to try to figure out what what their needs are or tell them like what this process would look like afterwards. Or how they fit into that, that equation. So even if it's just questions like that we can, what information do we wanna collect, make, not dumb it down, but make sure that people are hearing the questions that, that we are asking. And.
I think the questions that you just read are a great start.
Yeah, I think that was a really good critique and where it took me was that we should reach out to a few people that we want to reach out to and ask them to develop the questions. So that we're asking the right questions for it, like.
Well, I like, oh, I'm sorry. No, I was gonna say originally before you had read your email, that was my thing. Just to ask the questions, maybe it doesn't need to be a full blown out like presentation.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking.
But I also think, right. So to me, as long as we ask the questions, because my biggest concern was I want the information, but I don't want the information to be skewed. I've said this before, just because you have a certain demographic doesn't mean that you're dumb. My suggestion would be if we could, I, I don't, did you send that to us or to council?
I just sent it up.
Paige just sent it.
Okay, I was about to say, because to me it sounded like you've, after being a participant, you've already kind of reworded the questions for us. So if we could look at that and maybe when we have our next meeting, just go over it really quickly, but it seems like the, as far as rewording the language to be understandable and to get the information we want has already been done for us.
Yeah.
And so if we could go with that and then like you said, set up in the barber shop or, I don't even think maybe you need to have an app on your phone, just literally having a conversation.
I'm willing to, I mean, similar to how we had to click out last year and whatnot, I'm willing to also help facilitate dialogue at upcoming events and conversations that we can make it in a more simplistic way.
It, it was hard to gather information at some of the events, whatever question it was. I, I will tell you a couple that I went to, it was like one specifically in West Haven days and like, eh, and we did have, you're not gonna listen to us anyway. So, or how does it affect me? And so that, I think those are some of the questions that we need to already have answers to, say, well, it affects you because it is going to affect the shape of the city. It's gonna affect where we try to focus jobs and where we try to focus housing and what types of housing. And so it's still kind of, I mean, it's such an abstract thing.
Until it's behind your back door.
Right. And that's what I mean.
Up at it.
Yeah, I don't want to be responsible for the dumbing down phrase. I was, I suggested that, that we not do that specifically, referred to my own example of not understanding what we were looking at and saying, you know, I'm, you know, planning commissioner trying to understand this stuff and it's not easy to take out.
Be really direct. I mean, take pictures of some of the developments that have happened in the last six, seven years and ask people what they think about them. And where are they?
There was, there was some of that done because that was, that was some of my, some of my feedback was, wow, you can see there's some very unpopular projects here.
Well, even in our original presentation with me and Jody, when we talked about, we did discuss what was by right development, what it could look like. And then how things, some potential of how things could be different, so.
And that housing study, it, when it started revealing the impact of, you know, housing construction economics and if we are facilitating buildings that are over five stories, we're facilitating buildings that are luxury apartments and classic office. We very well need those types of unit uses and things, but where?
Right.
And then the rest of it is a whole nother ballgame. So I think that was a revelation that we, that we don't have a, a chance of getting any affordable units in a private development if it's over five stories. That was amazingly useful information.
Right.
And that's where that, that zoning, that's zoning. And and, and knowing on the map where different kinds of zoning goes.
And we need to do that comprehensively because we've had, we've had a variety of professionals over the years take little pieces of it.
Yes.
We knew that the special use permit, for example, we learned from the West Main consultants that what we were doing was encouraging speculation. And that we, by doing that, we were increasing the cost of land and decreasing affordability. I mean, we were told that now four, five years ago, right? But that was just one piece of it. So we need, we need a group to come and look at all of it comprehensively. And then we have a justification for comprehensive zoning because we don't have a justification if we don't look at it all comprehensively.
So to bring someone in to look at the zoning comprehensively, there's a lot, it sounds like can be done with all, all these other answers being had, just in terms of someone coming in, it's gonna take them some time to understand our current state in parallel to us kind of finishing, I'm trying to understand what things can happen in parallel.
They're gonna be comparing it to the twenty thirteen comp plan. They're gonna, they compare their zoning to your vision.
Okay, so we need.
We need the twenty eighteen vision.
It has to include land, obviously, land use and housing.
At least draft.
So we have some drafts.
Wouldn't that just take more time? Like.
We have some drafts. Clearly, we have some drafts. We have some ideas. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here and I had that kind, kind of thought in my head and I think, I think some of it is vastly different, which is why we're getting all these by right developments coming in real quick. So I think that it might not be a bad idea to kind of have some consultants come in and say, look at what the draft that we have. I mean, we have a draft. Is it right? I don't know. I mean, I, I, and I think that that's where it would help, be helpful to have the zoning and someone that has that understanding of writing zoning to say, with this, if we run zoning this way, this is what you'd get.
And, and that, that zoning discussion is what can go out to the public and should. And that's what really affects people's lives directly from it comes out of it.
And, and, and I think that's, that's helpful too because as, as you just stated, and this was something I found, because we were having some discussion about having some bonus densities for hike to get affordable housing and it's just, I mean, we had these conversations, does this work? And we kept asking, does, you know, this, this study, is this gonna help us be able to nail that down? And, and just like you, when we saw it, I think all of us went, okay, that tool in the toolbox is not sharp. It's not gonna work.
But it's, but if you do that everywhere, if you have the hike bonus working everywhere, you're gonna make a difference. And then you have to also work in tandem with getting property and land and, and giving it over to nonprofits to build more affordable housing on that. So it's, I, I think it, the little bits, ten, ten units in a two hundred unit building, that starts adding up.
But if you start from the bonus, you're gonna turn off the community, you're gonna turn off the community right away.
You gotta know where the bonus goes.
Because it starts sounding like the giveaway. You're, you're already approaching, forgive me for saying this, but you're already approaching it with a preconceived notion of what the outcome is going to be. We should be open to having experts look at us and analyze what we have without preconceptions about what the solutions are going to be. And, and as someone who's lived here off and on my entire life, I think we have to ask really hard questions and demand a lot from whoever looks at this. Because whenever we have just taken the conventional wisdom out there from standard planning consultants and excuse my French, but we've screwed up as a community. That's how we got urban renewal. That's how we got a lot of other things. Yes, let's look at what's happening out there. Let's look at what the best practice is and the most innovative thinking is. And then let's say, does it work for us? This place that is landlocked, that's ten and a half square miles, it's an academic community. For some people, it's a hometown for other people. We're demanding a lot from ten and a half square miles and we ask the hard questions of, does it work for us?
And I think another one of those questions has to be, is our current definition of affordable actually affordable?
Right.
Because the number of units that we know that we need, you know, we're eighty percent definition. I, I don't know that if we, if we do all the work that we want to do and get all those affordable units built and, and there's still a glut of affordability, it's, it's something that I would ask of anyone that gets paid to, to take a hard look at this as a consultant and say, are we working from the right, from the right perspective?
Together with the, the housing advisory committee's call for side consulting to craft the strategy.
But that housing advisory study, I mean, it, it tells you what, what, which, it breaks down the, the number of units we need per, per, per ALI.
And the outside resources looking to get is really for that engagement piece and then.
Yeah, but that's critical.
Yeah, yeah.
But then you, it, it would be good to then leave the zoning discussion in with that as you do the community engagement piece.
There was a Dateline on, on Sunday night where this same, I mean, we're not LA by any stretch of the imagination, but they were doing the Dateline and I hadn't had a chance to go back because I missed some of it, but it was talking about how they were taking to, to decrease homeless population. And they're talking about transition homes. And we heard some of that on Tuesday that we, we're in need of some type of transition homes. And they are doing, they are doing some of the city build units in order to make, to help meet their, their need. And I think, or that from the community, that, that we need to be as a city.
LA has, as a city can build, or is it the LA Housing Authority or is it?
That's what I've gotta go back and dig, because I've gotta get the.
Cities can't build affordable housing in a place in Virginia.
Right. But that's, that's what they were talking about is how they were decreasing the population of the homeless with these.
So what decisions can we make? What, what decisions can we make here? I mean, so are there chapters that are not interdependent that you feel we could just say, just to kind of focus our energy in other areas that we can go ahead and move forward and kind of chunk that out and have approval on and know that we're gonna continue to have to focus on these others that are, have other interdependencies?
So I would say that if we look at these questions A through G, can we answer these and maybe that would guide us?
All right. So, wanna read them out loud?
Regardless of external factors. Is December eighteenth a realistic timeframe for delivery of the completed comp plan to council?
I would say a draft comp plan. I mean, but I would like to see all chapters stretched out somehow.
And with the housing strategy, when is that targeted?
That's to be discussed next week, but I think more realistically, second quarter next year.
So we're talking.
June.
We're not talking.
June two thousand nineteen.
June first.
Yeah.
I have a proposal that we just hold off on the housing chapter and makes the strategy the housing chapter.
Yeah, that's been discussed by the housing advisory committee.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. That was their, the intention was that that would just almost be placed.
Well.
But there's a land use dependency there.
But the thing is, you can't, even if we, even if we got you a draft chapter and then without that strategy, we can't start on them.
You have goals. The strategy is how you operationalize that. You can do the goals. You can get the goals out of the.
Right.
Out of the housing needs assessment.
But I would say someone argued that there are some gaps still.
Sure, but I mean, I'm just saying that, that the part of, the forcing you to be a, to look at this all together is what a comprehensive plan does. You can't look at them in silos. That's what kills us all the time. Even transportation needs to be looked at at the same time as land use.
And I also want to reiterate the point you made earlier that it is, I consider this living document and I know there's timelines for these certain things, but I think we're almost making this complicated because for the sake of just checking a box and, as this has said, that jet box can't really be checked, but we need to recognize that we're gonna be continuing to evolve. But in the interest of getting housing actually implemented, we have to have some timelines we're placing on ourselves or else we'll just let it keep going and that's not productive.
And the planning commission serves at the pleasure of council. So you all need to give us some dates. I like, I mean, I just said my thing, a draft of all chapters by twelve eighteen. It's a draft and you're gonna have a better idea of what the strategies are gonna be. And then we, but we get to read it. I think a big problem with the housing, with the planning commission and the council is council's like always the down river, too far. And then we kind of tell you what we've been thinking and it's already so much time has gone by. Building us this loop in more often, I think, is a good thing.
And I think that, you know, obviously the strategy you want to take in parallel with the community outreach with some of those simple questions, I also think that a few months from now, if we have a draft, I think it's valuable to put that in front of people because that's something they can tangibly read and respond to, whereas some of this is still kind of.
That's what Mike was saying. I put it like a strontium. But I, it doesn't, and remove the Kaya's questions going door to door in different places. That still happens. So I'm hearing that we've answered that question A, B, and C. So if additional time is needed, how much? And does it have to be all done at once? So let me understand what I, is this a, are we, are, is council all in agreement?
Yeah, twelve eighteen.
If I can get them all to agree.
For a, for a draft, knowing there's gonna be, there's gonna be gaps, but it gives us something comprehensive to look at.
Draft.
I fully understand. She clearly stated it.
Okay, so a draft by the eighteenth, complete.
Twelve eighteen, yes.
Right. Draft. Only in the sense that all chapters are in it. Right, completed, all completed chapters. A draft.
A draft.
Right.
Okay.
Look at that. Um, and D doesn't mean, I said.
Go ahead, Hunter.
I'm just curious if we're talking about December, December eighteenth or December of two thousand eighteen?
No, December eighteen.
This year.
Of twenty eighteen, twelve eighteen eighteen.
Oh, I just thought it was the month of December.
Just December.
That was my, I was, I was reading it as December.
Oh, okay, okay.
Our second, our second council meeting.
For the holidays, yeah. You're not gonna do this on December twenty fourth. So, okay.
Sorry to interrupt, Vic. Details.
Okay.
So then E, I think is gonna, is being assessed by the housing advisory committee and be recommended on next week.
Okay.
Should the city resource a comprehensive affordable housing strategy?
Twice me again?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just for the sake of clarification, for minutes purposes and for all of us, that would actually be December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, which is the second Monday.
In terms of presenting to council.
Yes.
Which means we'll have to have it by the tenth, so you have it a week prior.
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page there. Good. Like dates.
Me too, yes.
What could we have it earlier?
Sure.
You mean, you have some more time to review it. A couple more days, like ten days or.
How about right after Thanksgiving? Should we take a, should I take a sabbatical from work to get this done?
The materials for the seventeenth would actually be due on the fourth.
On the fourth, oh, there you go. Okay, so, so hang on.
Learn all kinds of rules.
Hang on, hang on. So. The twenty seventh.
Let's open out because we just put five of the seven chapter drafts online for you all on Tuesday, so we're close.
So what I was gonna say is the twenty seventh is the last work session for us in November to have things for the fourth. So we would have to have it finalized on the twenty seventh to present and then, then, then staff would have time to do whatever they're doing. So we all need to make our final decisions on the twenty seventh.
So we all need to make our final decisions on the twenty-seventh. Staff, you have it.
Just to give me a sense of how enormous this is, how many chapters do you feel are pretty much done, the remaining ones?
Uh-
Aside from those three, like?
I think that, that land use and community engagement are the two that were really-
In addition to housing, right?
Well, in housing.
Well, in housing, we're just saying we're going to have more, it's going to be written, right?
Right, right.
Right, outside of this process.
So the tw- so let me back it up again. The twenty-seventh.
I won't be with you, but you do realize that's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and many people do.
It's the Tuesday after.
It's after, okay. Then it's a good date.
I do realize it.
Okay.
And it is after.
Does that feel good, hormone, that eating turkey gives you?
Triptidane.
We'll be, we will have, we will need to be, we'll, we can, we can work all night that night. We will have eaten plenty the week prior, so we fasten. It'll be fantastic, I can't wait.
Make no guarantees as to dress?
Lisa Green, stoic.
So would you all be able to get a draft of the survey, um, together within, um, by the end of this month?
Like next week?
You've laid out, I mean, I think you've laid out a pretty, pretty solid template, there's not a whole lot to be edited there.
You, can you meet me next week? Fantastic.
So the two of you are going to iron that out?
I guess so.
So if you all could get that, then I could set up some time for us to go out.
Um. We have a meeting on the twenty-eighth to this, to file, to do chapters. The twenty-eighth. Uh, and then the thirtieth is the housing meeting, which I will definitely be in attendance on the calendar, but it will be. And then. In order for us to have it to you by the end of this month, if you and I meet, I will need to have, we'll need to have something ready by the twenty-eighth, so I can bring it to them.
Okay. And part of that is, we're going to want to understand, what is the best way to get the information that's collected, you know, into a format that you guys can distill and, and use? So if that can be part of the conversation, not just-
I think if we do the same way that we did like, um, Tuesday, wasn't it Tuesday?
I don't know.
Where, um, staff pretty much takes the information that we get and they formulate it into some great formulation.
Because some of them might come through social media, so there'll be like a written format, and some of it might be audio, and some of it might be notes, since I'm just trying to make sure that we think about, how is it going to be most efficiently distilled into, you know, output that can be suggested?
The survey that you're talking about, I think the final product of, are you suggesting the entire final product for, for the end of the week, or just the questions?
Questions.
Okay, okay, okay.
All I was asking, though, is to think about the power of the questions, the data that you collect is going to be disseminated.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to recap, so I'm certain you and I are going to somewhere at some time meet prior to the twenty-seventh. And then the twenty-eighth, I'll be presenting whatever we finalize to the Planning Commission to see if that, y'all are in agreement of where we are. And then we'll send that back to y'all, saying this is where we're going, uh, this is the questionnaire. And then we'll kind of come up with some-
Collection mechanism.
Right. I have a question.
Week after.
What is going to be our range of collecting the information?
You mean, it's our goal?
No, it's our range, like, I know this is an onboard community engagement process, but I feel like, um, for us to be able to include the data, the reason as to why we want it to do-
For how long?
Yeah. Yeah, what is the range?
Like the month of September?
I was going to say September.
Okay.
Then you have October and half of November.
Or through maybe the first week of October.
Because the reason I'm asking is because, don't forget, we got to give staff time to, to put the information together, and also give us time to input the information and have you a draft by November twenty-seventh. So I'm thinking maybe September, I don't know if pushing it until October is going to be pushing it.
Yeah, I know.
Because not only are we meeting every Tuesday about this, but we still have other things that we're, that we have to do. Well, realistically, if we have this done by the twenty-eighth, we're not going to be ready. I mean, we'll be still planning how to get the information out in, back in the first week, so to give it a full, full month, that would be the first week of, um, October. So that extra week is just trying to push the planning, um, and setting up, and if we, and, you know, I'll have to talk with council if we're going to try to figure out this peer, um, to peer advocacy method, what that look like. And then you have, going to have to set up, um, trainings for that and figure out a facilitator to have, to try to help with that, so that's going to take quite-
And it'll take time, but it'll be something that's in place for when you do the housing strategy or the, and the zoning. It'll be something that's in place that you can use for many things.
So information gathering, September eleventh until October fifth, four weeks, that'll give you next week to get it finished.
Does that give staff enough time?
Week of the fourth, which is the week of Labor Day.
Does that give you enough time to gather and have it ready for us to?
Because we'll then have to have all that data ready to talk about, because our only work session that is currently planned at that point will be the twenty-third of October, would be the last work session before the twenty-seventh. So we would, I mean, again, it's not that we haven't been hanging out with each other a whole-
Yeah, we've had more meetings than just work sessions, so let's plan meetings more to get this done.
Okay. All right. Does that sound right, the eleventh to the fifth? All right.
So we have all these rewrite questions.
So with the zoning, I mean, if, I'm trying to, to me, I hear the zoning and the housing strategies go together. And you're thinking the housing strategies might be ready by the first, the end of the first quarter?
I think a draft will be then, but I think when, when you have a draft, just like we're talking about with the comprehensive plan, it's going to go through some iterations, I think the end of March-
So how about something like, by the first draft of the housing strategies, we had a, a real consultant team in place- That's going to do our audit of the zoning, and that will then, and how it's not aligning, our existing zoning is not aligning with the draft comp plan and the draft housing strategies? So that they can begin working in that area, and then it'll then be able to work together as the comp plan and the housing strategies are being finalized. You'd already have a group helping us understand the disconnects. And then, because that's going to be like March?
I think the draft would be mid to end of March, back half of March.
So, and it takes usually three months to, when you set out an RFP, to get in a consultant team? So that means by the draft December, we're going to have to know what kind of a technical group that's also understanding of the need for engagement, that's, is, is on, is, is like we're, we're sending out that RFP by December.
And we're going to fund this, I guess, with council strategic funds?
It could put onto the capital budget, we often use that for the capital budget.
The, the capital contingency, we need to give you an update on, I mean, there's been a few number, uh, there are quite, quite a number of things that have tapped that, so.
I know we have more to discuss on that.
When I wrote this question, I, I imagined it being just a few months past what Ms. Hill has said, and so I imagined that I would ask you to incorporate in your 2020 budget, and this would have a July one go-live date. If you need staff to figure out how this gets incorporated prior to July one, we'll come back to you with a plan, if the answer is March or April. But I, I do want to hear from you all.
Doesn't that sound good? In terms of timeline? Because we don't want to wait till the next fiscal year, like, I mean, we're going to need to get acting on the zoning.
What I'm hearing is council would like to at least know what the plan would be, uh, and I, we talked about this today.
Yeah.
We thought that this was ballpark of between two and three hundred thousand dollars. But will we visit that and talk about, of course, you don't know what, we'll come back as far as, once you create the scope, but-
And there, just to prepare, there will be an ask from the Housing Advisory Committee to support the resources they're asking for, too.
Okay.
And I know I'd like to see a draft scope, make sure that we're covering the bases right with the, with the, with the consultant groups doing both, in terms of how they audit the zoning, and how they go about doing the housing advisory, the housing strategies, and how they would engage the community on it.
But I agree, just knowing how long these processes take just to even procure the right resources, I think as soon as we know we have this draft plan, we should use that as like the tipping point to, to pursue that process.
But I don't want to wait until, I don't want to start thinking about that until December. We got to start thinking about it now, and that's what you're doing, so that's great.
Right, right. But the goal of the RFP would go out around the time where we're seeing the draft comp plan, with a goal then by the end of March, possibly having someone identified and ready to go if we have a draft housing strategy, that they can at least get started as we finalize all of these things. Okay. What else? Can we answer any more questions?
So we would then be looking to rewrite the zoning when?
That will, well, that, the auditing and everything would begin in March twenty eighteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Nineteen. Twenty nineteen. And then we just hope, I mean, it'd be great if by December twenty nineteen, you got a new document.
Optimistic.
So Planning Commission, that, that doesn't mean that takes any Tuesdays off of, we're just going to add those. So glad y'all signed up.
I just want to say sincerely how much I appreciate all the work you've done, please know that. This has been phenomenal to see a Planning Commission do this amount of hands-on work. You need to be commended, and it's appreciated, and unfortunately, there's still a heck of a lot more work to do, but thank you, really.
I concur.
Sorry about that, after giving my children from the Boys and Girls Club.
So we answered, I think, that last question, resources, we're going to look to external resources.
Who's putting out that RFP? I mean, who's, who's doing that? Is that, are y'all asking us to do that, our staff? I mean, who's responsible for that?
Staff will seek your input and create the document.
I would like that to be a city, a joint decision.
What is this?
The, the-
The RFP council?
RFP.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'll volunteer.
I mean, even if we have a smaller subcommittee, I don't think that's something that we should do in the back end. The Planning Commission should be very closely involved with that study.
Yes, and maybe a couple of us.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, it's all a subcommittee.
So although it's not something that we're moving forward right now, I'm imagining something that's similar to the way that staff engaged with a group about the downtown parks master planning process.
Yes, very much so.
And you're welcome to help us with this together as well.
Thank you, but I, you know?
I'm out of here.
I think, I think Tennyson had it right, old order changes, giving place to the new. But I'll be cheering you on and looking from afar.
And thank you, Jenny Keller, for all you've done.
Absolutely.
You came back for more.
Yeah, right. Jeez.
Part of their public comment.
Oh, now we get the whole hour.
Are we done? With this section of the meeting?
I think we should ask for the public thoughts on this topic.
On this topic? On this and, and anything.
Yeah.
Okay, and then you want to transition into the efficiency study afterwards?
The public comment.
I made the silly mistake thinking you might want to take a five-minute break. All right, anybody from the public who wants to talk about this recent discussion about the comp plan, zoning rewrite, timeline, et cetera, please go to the microphone so that we're capturing this, because this is on Facebook Live for folks who couldn't be here tonight.
Order of operations. Is this a three-minute thing?
Generally, that's not exactly how the work sessions are, but we'll, we'll ask people not to monopolize the time.
I'll be short, short and sweet. My name is Emily Dreyfus, I'm an organizer with the Legally Justice Center, and I really appreciate the urgency that you all have reacted with. I had hoped we would have a housing strategy drafted by January thirtieth, and it sounds like your timeline, although I am a little confused about the timeline discussion, I would love for someone to just roll that back through so the public can hear that in one comprehensive piece. It sounds like the outreach to the people who have not been at the table thus far will probably happen concurrently with the other work. And I, I just want to be sure that that feedback loop is incorporated, that it's not that we go through a bunch of outreach and say, oh, this is interesting information, but we don't change the direction and actually listen and heed that input. I also just wanted to mention that the more I've looked at potential solutions, the more I realize that incentives to developers are really a drop in the bucket compared to what we need. That we need UVA at the table, we need to be pushing them to develop workforce housing, um, and we need broader solutions so that we're not just chipping away at the problem a dozen units at a time, but we're really making a larger impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to read the timeline, or are you going to?
We can do the timeline, I thought, I'll, oh, you go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
It sounds like we've agreed that we're going to have a draft comprehensive plan of all the chapters, recognizing that most of housing and land use are certainly going to be much, much draft, but by the end of the year, so mid-December. And in parallel, we'll be then going out for RFP for the zoning. The goal is to have a draft housing strategy by the end, back half of March, draft, that will then get, get that, those groups kicked off. And then I think the goal is to have a finalized housing strategy by June first. And I think in parallel with that, then that would be a finalized comprehensive plan, right?
And I heard something a little bit different, so I'm going to add something else.
Sure.
I think you were asking about more engagement.
Yeah, we can get that fixed, yeah.
So we are going to have some questionnaire ready for the, for August twenty-seventh comprehensive plan meeting with the Planning Commission. Then we are going to have a conversation about more data collection of going out into the community. That data collection will take place from September eleventh, twenty eighteen, to October fifth, twenty eighteen, in some fashion to be determined. At that point, we'll put that information, we still have work sessions with the Planning Commission, that information will go into the draft that we will, the Planning Commission, finalize on November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. So that, is that, is that helpful?
And then in addition, separate from that, though, there is going to be, through the housing strategy development, a separate outreach just specifically on housing that is going to be initiated by the HACX plan, and I don't want to speak for Sunshine, but he has a timeline that he's already, that we'll be presenting next week to the public in the same kind of format. But it will not be exactly parallel with that.
I will just say that, so that we don't exhaust the public, it would be really nice to combine these things so that you're, you're cutting, cutting ones.
What's hard is that what they've just proposed for this comp plan is very or, or organic, I guess I should say, whereas this is actually going to bring someone in to help us, guide us through that process.
So they're going through procurement, too, so they're writing an RFP?
They're going to be going, yes.
So again, I just, the, the person that does this should understand zoning. So maybe the zoning consultant comes on board first to do the housing strategy. I don't know.
No, I think we should definitely be combining resources where possible, I just, I cannot, I don't want to speak to the details of this, this is not, I don't have all that hammered out yet.
Right. We'll talk about that next week.
Council, so the goal, though, just so that you know, the Housing Advisory Committee is planning, all three subcommittees have met this week. They are all proposing output that Mr. Dronzio and I will be meeting over the weekend to pull together, to present an agenda to council with supporting information, so that we can have that to you no later than forty-eight hours before, so that you can kind of digest. If there's some major gaps, let us know, but it's really going to drive around timelines and expectations for what we're going to accomplish. And this, this, this conversation's very helpful towards that, and also we're going to have to talk about just the role of the Housing Advisory Committee moving forward, as that's, you know, been in, something that's come up in many- moving forward, as that's, you know, been in, something that's come up in many cases. But I think that hopefully you'll have what you need to just, so that we can have the most effective use of that time, and I think, again, this conversation's helping out.
So then, whatever we see from that, could adjust our zoning RFP.
Perspective.
If they could be combined to get the consultant that does both. Instead of two different consultants that require management from staff two different ways, it's more efficient if you've got.
And I just need a great understanding around the skills that they're looking for with that consultant, because I'm not sure that those skills are the same. I just, we'll need to confirm that.
I want to suggest to Chair Green that the Planning Commission step up and take a very strong leadership position in this, because it will be the Planning Commission that will move this forward into implementation, and that we'll have to use it as its standard for reviewing applications that come forward in the future, and I'm going to be very candid, because I've been very candid tonight. The Planning Commission and the HAC have not played well together, and this should be the Planning Commission's study in light of the findings of the HAC. And if the Planning Commission doesn't play a major role in it, it won't understand it, and it won't necessarily be good zoning policy. It should be looking at zoning comprehensively in the city.
Are you suggesting that the one member on our Housing Advisory Committee is maybe not enough?
No, I'm just saying, the Planning Commission, I mean, it's a planning study. It's a zoning study. Housing is one aspect of zoning.
Right, right.
And so to use the same consultant might work, and they might add people to their team, but you might get a broader perspective if not, and so you should consider both options. But I don't think the Planning Commission should just stay over to the side. It should get involved in that process and ask to be in sessions to interview those consultants and contribute to the RFP so that you get what you need.
Okay.
And I suspect if you don't, it'll be the HAC study. It won't be the Planning Commission study.
Okay.
I think we would have been farther along if the Planning Commission had known about the housing study, had been able to contribute to it and review it and ask questions all along. And then, once it came out, it was held for several months before we really could get our hands on it, and that's no way to work together. The right hand has to know.
You want the needs assessment?
Yeah.
That was, staff provided that to both groups, I thought.
But the HAC was working with it, and so you need to work together, I've said it for several months, you have to work together, and the Planning Commission has to step up and play a leadership role in this, because that's the level at which it will be reviewed and recommendations will be made to council. And it's a legally required body.
Okay.
Are you, I just think there's some confusion around, it's fine.
It's okay. I mean, it's why we're here, let's.
So.
Phil Dronzio, Chair of the HAC. I think that Ms. Keller's point is well taken in the sense of engagement between the HAC and the Planning Commission has not been nearly as tight as it should have been. I, I can, it's not driven that way, it's not intended that way, it's been very clear to the HAC that the Planning Commission has been collectively up to their eyeballs in the comprehensive plan. We've also been working on, you know, in parallel on several things at once, but we have sought to work more closely. We have raised that with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has said, yes, we understand that we are also up to our eyeballs in the comprehensive plan, but we do need to be more cohesive on this. And the study you mentioned, that data was shared as soon as we, as the HAC had it, and the time, we tried to make people aware of that way back, and we were very clear, you know, at the time, Mr. LeAndrea was there and was working in concert to the extent that we could. But I agree, I mean, I think that a lot of what I've heard here today, particularly about the outreach piece, is something that we have been working on and have been developing, and unfortunately, our point person on that had to bolt, but we are working on that, and so next week, I think that we can have a lot more clarity on how some of these things are working and how we can at least drag it to the finish line together.
So let me get this straight. HAC is working on an engagement, not strategy. We're working on an engagement strategy.
PHA.
PHA has got an engagement strategy. So.
The Strengthening Systems Grant for the Housing Authority and CACF has an engagement strategy and a consultant.
Fantastic. So when are we all going to get together and look at these engagement strategies and see if they all work? Because this is exactly what we heard on Tuesday, where we have meeting fatigue. I know we have meeting fatigue, I'm sure you all have meeting fatigue, I've seen you some here every. So why, so, I don't even know what to ask.
So I can connect with Sunshine and see what their strategy.
Well, they're going to present it next week, I mean, so we'll all be here.
Who's they?
Sunshine is the point person that Phil was just referring to.
Oh, okay. So HAC and Sunshine are one and the same.
So it's the same strategy or no?
Well, Sunshine is our point person for this version for the HAC, but he also, obviously, it covers PHA.
So they're still two separate.
Right.
Those are running, that's his, he has a pre developed PHA market thing.
Kathy, I now understand your question. Oh, good. I mean, it sounds, I mean, but, yes. So if we are doing this outreach simultaneously, what is the timeframe for the HAC's engagement?
That's what, I don't have all the details of Mr.
We might need to debrief after both of these work sessions.
We might need to debrief after.
Get HAC and PC together to really get the timeline worked out.
Good idea.
And that's why I was hoping everyone was aware of both sessions, and so I mentioned it to the HAC this week, and that's my Sunshine and Phil came, and I'm hoping that next week a couple Planning Commissioners can just be here during that conversation so that after both of these, and then we have the CAP, you know, CIP discussion, which I think all these things are going to be interrelated when these three weeks wrap up, and I hope we're all on the same page at that point, but I hear you.
And I'm, I think I'm going to go back to, we need, we need a small subcommittee, I feel, from, even if it's Planning Commission, just to, at council, HAC, whoever else, I mean, I know we have subcommittees that are just rampant throughout the city, at a meeting all the time, but if, if nothing else, just for engagement to have these conversations and make sure that we are all doing the same thing, and if we're going out to the public for a solid month, why are we not asking some of the questions then?
Exactly, exactly.
I think this is the city's priority. It makes sense.
Right.
Well, we can't ask every question, or we're not going to get any answers, so we have to be clear.
Well, but I think some of those questions would over. We know, you don't think so.
I don't know. I don't know what they, but we have to be careful about trying to do it all at once because that's overwhelming.
No, no, I don't disagree, but I'm just thinking that if we look at a question that you and I are talking about, and then we have a question that's similar.
Yes.
Yes. Share information.
And that way, you've got different pools of people to help.
Right.
I think the community would appreciate that, too, because that's what we heard at our meeting the other night. They are tired of people knocking at their door, and they're starting to feel like just statistics.
Exactly.
We have someone that would like to speak.
No, y'all, y'all are doing well. My name's Aaron. I'm a organizer with Search Charlottesville and a member of the Charlottesville Low and Young Housing Coalition. I think one of the things that's kind of become clear in this discussion is that, you know, now that we have some concrete dates for a timeline, that, you know, time is short, and that one of the things that's going to be really important in moving this, you know, investigation and this outreach forward is going to be getting some funding available for facilitating that outreach. So I guess my question or suggestion is that, you know, realistically, we have two months, according to this timeline, to do this outreach, but if we have to wait another two, three, four weeks to get that funding approved, where does that leave us? So I would suggest that council move with all appropriate speed to get that funding allocation put together, if you're serious about this timeline, and if that requires a special session to get done, I think that would be a really important thing to look at.
And Ms. Rice, I asked you about this because that came up for the Housing Advisory Committee. I know, I'm not sure what you proposed tonight, if there is, I don't know what the funding estimate would be, or if we're just going to use our own resources to do it, but I know that I've suggested the Housing Advisory Committee be very clear what their ask is for, so that we can give them direction next Thursday, knowing that we may vote on it later, but then at least allows them to start that process in the interest of not losing a whole window opportunity, and that was, you said that would be, we could give direction during a work session without taking a formal vote until the next council meeting.
Right. But this is for, to fund the peer-to-peer outreach, right?
I was talking about for the HAC's request. Now, this peer-to-peer outreach, I'm asking, like, do we even have, do we know how much?
Do we know how much that's going to cost?
Just to say the, this conversation.
So that might be, is there a way to figure out a ballpark?
Well, we don't even know, we don't have people in place. We don't know what.
But we're just trying to figure out how many people would need, you know, just.
HAC has a draft.
So HAC does have a draft of that?
HAC does for their piece, but this is for the separate piece.
No, but we're trying to combine them.
If we are combining, yes.
We're trying to combine them, so that's a really good start. So we'll get that next week.
Look, if they've got a wheel created, it makes the bus roll.
Absolutely.
Let's see what they got.
Sure. We do have it. I'm just, it's, we'll have it this weekend. We just, I don't want to give numbers out, but we are still working through stuff, so this weekend we'll do have it.
But that's great. Can I get that, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fantastic.
So the entire, the packet that HAC will send to council will also go to the Planning Commission?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other comments for this section of the meeting?
I have one, but I'd rather not, my hip is screaming right now, and I'd rather not get up to go to the microphone, but I can speak loudly.
Sure.
That's okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is L.D. Perry. I'm not here representing any particular group, just as a citizen today in Charlottesville. Just wanted to make a comment as I was listening, and there's several points that came up that resonated with me. The word comprehensive to me means specifically something, and so while I recognize that, especially as I recognize myself as a person of African descent and recognizing the history and cultural dynamics that move us many times to focus on, appropriately so, on one particular group when we start talking about lack of community engagement, okay? At the same time, I think if, within our ten and a half, I thought it was only ten, but somebody, I heard today, ten and a half, so I learned something, ten and a half square miles, you know, the question is, is there also some, this is, I'm not expecting an answer, okay? An effort made to engage parts of the community who are low-income working people, okay? Individuals who are Latinas, individuals who are immigrants, but more specifically, immigrants who self-identify themselves as immigrants of color, okay? And then the last is folks who either are currently or on the border of being homeless, okay? I'm concerned about engagement, the community engagement piece, the engagements of those folks, where can it truly be called comprehensive? That's all.
Speak to that earlier, you were talking about the two meetings.
Yes, we talked about that on Tuesday, specific ideas to engage those groups. We can do it, it would take time and money.
And if I could follow up on that at the table that Lyle and I were facilitating earlier this week, there was a representative from Seim Barreros, from the Spanish congregation at the Church of Incarnation, a staff person from The Haven, and someone from the food bank, and I think at another table, there was someone from the IRC, so I think all the groups that you were talking about were invited and actually showed up, and they were really excited about engaging the people that they work with, and had some suggestions on how to do that.
May I just add very quickly, and I'm appreciative of what you just said, I'm reminded with some of the folks who I work with, who happen to be homeless, okay, that it's one, it's one thing to engage the people who work with them, it's another to engage them, okay? So that's all I'm going to say. I'm not saying you're not doing that.
No, no, exactly, and this was to ask them how to work with the group they're engaged, yeah, working with, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So as we wrap up this comprehensive planning question, I just had one question for John. What are any legal things that we need to be considering in terms of timeline? Are we all, are we good there?
Just briefly, 15 to 2230 puts the five-year stipulation to review your comprehensive plan, but I think the Planning Commission and the council, you are right now reviewing the plan, and I think when you have that document before you in December, that would certainly satisfy any statutory requirements.
Thank you.
So this last section of the meeting, as we said at the front end, was intended to really make the best use of the time when NOVAC comes to town to talk about the efficiency study, but particularly about the NDS study. You folks are aware that after the original efficiency study, we asked them to come back and look at a couple departments, NDS was one of them, and they came back with, I think, eight key recommendations, and it's my understanding that the council has had some feedback about the changes from the original draft to the second draft, about the content of the recommendations, and about folks who felt like they gave some feedback and didn't feel like it was represented in the report. And if we can get on the record some of that content that council has had come into them through folks that are here to make public comment today, or in the period that leads up to a work session with NOVAC, obviously, that'll help us to have the, you know, most productive time with those folks. So with that in mind, this part of the meeting was intended to take public comment from any of the Planning Commissioners first, and then, of course, anybody who is in the audience who came to comment on that matter.
Can we take a small recess?
Oh, yeah. There's five minutes.
I'm not, I'm not going to argue with you, I'm not going to argue with, yes, let's take five minutes, how about that? It's been a long week. It's been a long week.
I'll take my one too soon.
It's kind of like, is Albert sphere? Did I, oh, did I take your seat? No, I'm going to sit. Yeah, like, with Andrew Gaspere, Johnny, he's like, maybe he's, because he was with some friends. And he said he gets a million dollars.
Mr. Dow, I think we'll get through this.
Yeah, Jenny in the back.
Jenny, could I get you to please come back and join us? Thank you. Who else? Who's saying?
One.
Seven.
We have a quorum, so if you-
I just have to definitely leave my book. I have to be over at International School for-
I'm ready, you're ready?
So, Ms. Dow, is that picking her children? All right. So I think we were going to start with just, did you all have any general comments you wanted to make before we heard from the public regarding this subject?
I'm not as, in, as aware, I'm not well-informed of the efficiency studies, so I don't. That makes sense.
I think this was the original concern I had about this portion of the meeting from the get-go, is while I got this in February and I, you know, read it then, I mean, we've had a lot going on, so I'm not sure I'm prepared to even discuss anything about that this evening. And, 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 and I, we didn't even have it on our radar screen until last night, so I didn't have a chance to do anything with that.
Is it fair to ask if everyone could just review the report on the Planning Commission and provide, we're just trying to get feedback to the consultants before they come and have a meeting with us, and I think you all would be included in that meeting, but it's just, we're trying to be as proactive as possible to give them any questions we have or concerns we have about the output of that study, so that when they come, they get already addressing that.
I work with all timelines. Do you want us to review it? When do you want comments back?
Paige, do we have a general sense for when they may be available to meet with council? What was our goal?
Leslie reached out to them, they're, they're on vacation this week, which is why they're here tonight, so they're hoping to get back with their students what their availability is, we're hoping for September, so.
Is it easily, easily available somewhere?
Yes.
It was a link today that was sent out, I think.
Okay, cool.
If not emailed.
I also do a search efficiency study.
We'll send an email with the link.
Yeah, I'll send it right now.
Thank you. We got the email coming to you.
It's confirmed.
So-
That's why I didn't see it, because I was on the way here.
By the 27th, if you guys can read that, that's the weekend, y'all have nothing else to read this weekend, and then we'll talk about it Tuesday. Perfect.
So what 27th are you talking about?
She's teasing him, I think.
No, I'm not, but-
Like, about Tuesday?
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, can we just throw out some comments, because I can give him some teasers?
Oh, good.
Okay, go.
So, just to kind of, there's an overarching concern that, when I read it, that there were, there was a lot of information collected from the public about certain categories of information, and they got feedback, but then the recommendations did not really relate to those findings. So, for example, we were just talking about zoning, and the category of zoning, they had a finding that 69% of respondents in their surveys said that it was not handled effectively, 57, 69% not handled effectively, 57% not helpful, and yet there were no recommendations in the study on the how to do, deal with it. Didn't, wasn't clear that there were any advisory groups interviewed, and I have talked to some neighborhood association presidents that have said that they didn't feel like their feedback was included. Just trying to get some little highlights, it talked about, it didn't, it didn't mention any, any, anything at all about comprehensive plan updates, or long-range planning, small-area planning, so consequently there were no recommendations about what were the, what were the staff needs, or what were the, what was, what was the implication from an organizational viewpoint? There was, it was almost like that was not even an item that was mentioned as an important So I don't want, I mean, if there's any more, I can, I've got others, but I just wanted to get, get it out there that there was, there was missing pieces, and there were things that were findings that then didn't seem to be addressed. And given your lens, it'd be really helpful to look at this and, and see what you think.
Without knowing why something wasn't handled well, it's basically worthless to us.
Critique without a suggestion is-
Yeah, I, we've heard before from staff of how developers have complained about the process, but then staff reminds us that the applications don't provide the entire information, that they don't, they're not comprehen, or they're not, they don't provide the information that's requested, and it's going back and forth, back and forth, to developers until they get the information that's requested. So when is it because they're not providing the proper information at the first, and when is it that it's actually NDS holding things up? When they have that information?
And see, that, I didn't see that kind of discussion in the efficiency study, and I didn't see a resolution. So we're, we're trying to get that, we wanted to discuss the, and I don't want to get into all the, I've got other things waiting for, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that it does, it is really important to what you're doing.
Okay. Well, I mean, you know, I don't need an efficiency study to tell us that if we're all working on the same thing in different silos and we're not talking, we're not efficient. I mean, sorry, I'm not, but we're not. We're, HAC's doing their thing, and we're doing our thing, and we're not being-
So in an efficiency study, you know, what is, what should it have shown us? Like, an organizational structure that broke silos?
Well, but, and, and we're talking about the people that it did outreach to, are we doing outreach to the same people that we're all getting? Do we get a good cross-section of the community?
Yeah.
Because while my developers may think that we're not doing a good job just pushing through rezonings, the people who are living in the shadows of some of these nine-story buildings may think that we pushed that thing too fast.
And that raises a very good question, because if the recommendations, which some of them make recommendations to accelerate the processing of applications, and yet there's no discussion about the need to change zoning, then we're actually just accelerating a process that is not in sync with the community's vision. So I think that's why this is really important, know what, what's missing in that study, so that we don't start acting on their recommendations. If you get what I'm saying?
The recommend, the, the outreach, and now that I'm remembering, it did feel very one-sided as to who the outreach came from.
We don't want to be efficient at doing what we know we don't want to do.
Yes.
And I will say, the time that this, that day was being collected, I was a neighborhood leader, and the neighborhood leaders were questioning why was it that the development community was invited to his table and that the neighborhood leaders weren't. And I will say, as a neighborhood leader that often sits on the development meetings just to inform myself, I will say a lot of the concerns were consistent in terms of opportunity areas, even though these are two, I think, and often competing groups of people, some of the concerns that were being raised were similar, and I mean, I can, I'll bring that when we bring, have a broader discussion, but I, that was very interesting to me, that these two groups still had some of the same frustrations in terms of communication or lack of communication, so.
Like, not knowing what the agenda was today. Let's talk today.
So, there's another interesting thing, that there was a statement that the city development process is well-defined, in spite of the fact that 60 to 80% of some respondents said that it wasn't, it wasn't coordinated, and it didn't result in quality development. So again, that's what I mean, the disconnect is really something important to take a look at.
That's a disconnect between their data and their finding?
Yeah.
And that was a general observation, there was data, and then the narrative did not align with that data. But I would love to hear if anybody was coming to speak on this topic.
Oh, anybody else? Any, yeah, great.
Great.
Ready, you guys?
I want to, just really quick, I want to make sure that I've got this right. You want us to, especially with new, read this efficiency study, reread it, some of us, and, and have some comments, and send those comments back to you, or just us be present at this meeting when the-
The consultant is here.
Consultant comes back. Or we can, we can pull them all together and have one representative from Planning Commission. How do you guys want to see that?
I think, ideally, we'd like to actually have it to the consultant before they come here, so that they can die, they can be prepared to respond.
You could somehow consolidate your comments, it's probably easier.
So are you adding this to our agenda for Tuesday?
It doesn't, because the consultant's not going to come until, what?
So if we had comments a week before the consultant came, would that be enough time?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just want to get, we don't want to blindside them. We don't have to have it in terms of the creatures.
And again, in the spirit of what we were just talking about, how you don't want to be left out.
Right.
This is, you, you are working with Neighborhood Development Services all the time, you're critically important, your perspective is critically important.
Is this a document that Hunter, whoa, whose name I can't think of right now, and I have seen, have you seen that? Wow, wow, wow. This is Dr. Hunter Lowes.
Yes, we got it today.
We are new.
How long did we get it?
5:00 p.m. today.
There was a link.
It wasn't that one.
There was a link.
I don't know.
And we, the expectation was that you, we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, and that everyone digested it before this other meeting. Because we largely brought it off the agenda, but we at least wanted to provide an option, because some public did know that we were going to be talking about this, or anticipated we would be, so we didn't want to lose that.
But I'm glad we brought it up, because you clearly weren't aware of its significance, so.
Can you guys give us plenty of time as soon as you know? Can we be made aware of, of the timeline for this consultant to return, and when you want your comments by, so we can send that out?
A week before they come, and-
But we don't know when they're coming, and so what I'm saying is, is that's not Missy's timeline, I just need you all, council and council staff, to communicate with her so she can get with us, or you can, whatever. We're going to need more than about four hours to do that. Okay? Sorry, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Greg Pao, I'm an architect here in town. And I co-chair a group called the Charlottesville Area Development Roundtable. We are the customers of NDS along with the citizenry, neighborhood associations. Let me say a few introductory things. First of all, I think it's wonderful that this study was done. We as cadre folks appreciate being invited in, we were one of the interview group. I'm, I'm equally appreciative that some of the neighborhood associations were interviewed as some of the interview groups. I certainly, another comment, I think there are some terrific people working at NDS under a lot of pressure. I believe some of the pressure is because of lack of clear organization. And this was an organizational study. And so some of the comments that, that we have made in a very detailed letter we sent to council, which was not sent to Planning Commission, but I can remedy that, outlined some of our concerns. One of the other quotes that we had is 80%, 84% of respondents to the surveys, survey disagreed or strongly disagreed that the city's process for development review compares favorably with other jurisdictions. Now, this is this world-class city and 84% of us feel that the process does not work well. And I would submit that not working well, it doesn't work well for the poor staff on, on the staff side and it's equally frustrating for those of us that try to getting things accomplished. I feel it too, that there is a disconnect between the, the survey results that were published and the conclusion that the status quo is pretty good. What we do is highly collaborative. The review processes are highly interactive with many, many, many different technical jurisdictions. So I think that organization, clear communication, clear interaction that is structured between different segments of NDS and more, equally importantly, between NDS and other departments within the city that are responsible for the built environment is, is really critical. And I don't feel that this organizational study really addressed that. An organization chart, and if you have seen the report of, of NDS, has, it looks more like a seating chart than a clear organization of how internally these various different functions, which include development review and zoning and inspections and engineering. These are clear different functions that are key to interact with one another and, and clear to interact with the applicants that are trying to, to create development in the city. Just as an aside, an organization chart that doesn't acknowledge that there is an interface between the public and the department, I think is just, and maybe I'm being picky about graphics, but it seems to me that that is indicative a little bit of, I think, part of the challenge, which is that because of the pressures, I think, there's, is a certain lack of a culture of service. And this is a neighborhood development services whose goal is to help facilitate development in the city. So I think the culture of service is important. And I think if things were more clearly organized and, and more emphasis was put on service, that it would work well. And yes, development review, we all have our faults, it is complex, some of the submission requirements are inadequate. But when it takes eight submissions to get a site plan approved, there's a breakdown in the process. And, and you know, I've been through a big project, as some of you know, that did take nine site plans reviews and it wasn't because of incompetence on either side. It was so overwhelming and there were 22 reviewers that weren't talking to each other and no single port of responsibility with NDS to, to, to try to coordinate the differences of perspective between the different agencies. An example, you must have trees, we want it to have trees, you can't have trees. Now, getting two sets of comments like that, coming back at us, puts it on us to try to resolve an internal inter-agency issue. And, and so we think that it's critical that, that there be a very formal review process that after we submit, all agencies should be at the table. So if there are disagreements, like trees, no trees, that somehow those can be worked out efficiently so that the resubmission isn't trying to satisfy conflicting things that frankly can't be resolved by the submitter. Then I think that, that the process would be far more smooth for everyone. So I, we, we, we first wrote our response before the, the city manager situation. And what we had recommended was that, oh, I should preface, we looked at several other jurisdictions and there's a separate report that was sent out again today with 13 different organization charts of similar planning groups around the country that are far more clear in how the process works. And by the way, they also have performance metrics, like you have to get things done within 60 days, that sort of thing, which does add for efficiencies on both sides. So performance metrics is something else important. But in addition to looking how, how planning departments work, we were equally interested in how the city overall was organized as it relates to the built environment. And, and we strongly think, and based on the studies and our own experience, that because there's a, there's a need for public works and parks and rec and the various NDS groups and possibly others, everybody, all of us that deal with the built environment, that it made sense to have a leader within the city organization. We, at the time, we're talking about another assistant city manager of the built environment. That might be a way to resolve things. He could be the ultimate arbiter too, when you get some things that simply can't be resolved by the applicant. So we think that it's important that, that NDS gets a clear organization that makes management sense. We think that the city can take advantage with, with the changeover in the city manager to look at, at organizing the city departments so that somehow the built environment has someone that, that oversees all of those various agencies. Let me just check my notes and see if I missed anything else. We need clear management practices, we need clear performance metrics for the, for the NDS. And we need a clear reorganization of NDS so that it's very clear internally, the reports, as I think I said, an organization charts where everybody reports to one person and it's all this upward flow and there's no hint at interaction between the agencies is a formula for lack of success. Interestingly, that single person that's shown in the org chart is not the director of NDS, which suggests another issue. So I really think that, that you were not served well with NOVAC in that I don't feel that there's a clear management approach to how to deal with, with various components of an organization in an efficient, clear manner. And then if you could add the service culture on top of that, I think it would make everyone's job much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Susan Crichell, I, from ICS, but I just want to add one comment to what Greg is saying and that is, all of the things that he's talking about affects the affordability of the development that you see here. So it has a long-range effect to, to the goal that we're ultimately trying to get to.
Emily Dreyfus, I, it's been a while since I looked at the report and I'm not an expert. I haven't actually worked directly with NDS very often. But one of the things that I thought was lacking in the report was engagement with the broader public and in the extensive level that should have been reflected, I would think, in an efficiency review. And that public might include nonprofit developers, for-profit developers, but also people in the community to talk about what effect NDS has on their lives. Because most people don't realize what effect it has, but it's, it's very significant. So I, I would hope that there might be a deeper dive into looking at what kinds of reforms might be needed. Thank you.
So I think one thing that I want to make sure that we point out when we're talking about these changes that any department within the city may need is that, so including NDS, that, I mean, I asked Councilor Galvin, was, you know, was NDS the mess that maybe the study showed? How long has it been? And it was, it was before this director that's in there now, so this isn't anything new. And most of the city departments need to be restructured in a way. And that is going to take a fresh, fresh perspective, I think. And so that means that in, that in this time, we have to be very careful about the same people, including some of the groups like cadre and HAC, being able to determine what these changes look like. Because I think some of the push and pull with some of these organizations are part of the issue also. And that staff are not able to set clear lines on what they are able to do without influence from outside groups. So that is going to take a willingness from the community to be open to total change. And that is something that I'm not necessarily hearing when these complaints are, are being voiced.
Sorry, I don't have enough for everybody. You already have one.
I'm kidding. I've got a whole box of them at the office.
My name's Neil Williamson, I'm with the Free Enterprise Forum, a public policy organization focused on local government in Charlottesville and surrounding counties. I sincerely appreciate the city providing the opportunity for this public feedback. The document, the NOVAC study document is very thorough and candid regarding its assessment of the NDS department and the related approving authorities. I think the question of the survey set is valid. However, I think the results, when you consider who was asked, the customers and the neighborhoods, maybe not in the representative sample, but the sample is in the report and I encourage the Planning Commission, if you haven't read that part, read who was surveyed, it's critically important. But a few of the numbers, good news, the tree commission has a 75% positive impact, according to the survey. City council, 55%, being the Hall of Fame. Planning commission has a 67% negative impact. That's combining the complete and partial. 71% did not believe the application submittal process worked well. And a full 80% found the review process not easy to understand. The recommendations in the reports, I agree, don't jive completely with the survey data. But they are still worthy of consideration. But there are three critical components that seem to be outside the scope of this report, and Greg and I did not talk before this, that need to be addressed to seriously, to fix this broken department. Accountability, reduction in review, and a philosophical shift. The report outlines a number of metrics that should be tracked to better understand, identify, and fix areas of inefficiency. While laudable, absent one individual who will be held accountable to the targeted goals, this report will do nothing more than sit on a shelf. The Free Enterprise Forum calls for direct, transparent, public accountability. Reduction in review, looking at the chart in the back of the report, is every level of this review necessary? Or are some of these items designed more to prevent the last bad thing rather than encourage the next great thing? The Free Enterprise Forum calls for a review and perhaps a reduction in the application review items. Several years ago, we provided the NDS department, as well as other planning departments, the pencils that I've handed out, that outlined what we believe their marching order should be. The permit us to permit you philosophy does not cut corners on review, nor approves everything that comes in the door. It is much more like a mortgage banker mentality. This application process is thorough and tough, but I will help you, my customer, get through it. The permit us to permit you philosophy requires leadership and engagement. Two areas, according to this efficiency report, that are currently lacking in NDS. The Free Enterprise Forum calls for the city council and the planning commission to endorse NDS's role in helping citizens gain the needed, their needed approvals. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I hope you enjoy the pencils.
I just wanted to offer one response, which was, I've had a number of, which I think we'll knit together some of these ideas here, which is several meetings I've had over the last couple of years. And this is with a lot of respect to the fine people in NDS who are working very hard. And I think part of this has to do with the trend that we've seen in so many different fronts, which is it's an in-demand city, there's a lot of activity. And when you have a lot of activity, you have supply and demand problems. So when there's a lot coming in to NDS, you, it can be really, it can be challenging for the system that has. So, but anyway, with that said, so from Habitat, I sat and got a very long list of, of challenges and that they had had, which were very similar to the same complaints that I heard from, you know, like an issue with fire lanes in, in a large development. And the commonality in these seems to be a siloing of the, of the hangups that happens without any, which from what I have heard, causes approval times sometimes to go into the years. Whereas in a lot of other cities, it's like three months. And that drives people crazy on both the nonprofit and the for-profit sides. And it doesn't seem good for the city or for anybody. And the other thing was this lack of kind of an ombudsman approach where somebody, somewhere is kind of taking the, an overarching role of trying to coordinate and get all these different hangups resolved so that at least there's that sensibility and there's like an actual role within the department. And that, the absence of that means that people get, you know, that there's hangups on six or seven different small issues which are siloed. And it's easy to have, and then that creates a negative, I think what we're hearing here, which is the applicant ends up being hung up on technicalities and there's not really a, an overarching problem-solving approach. So however that were to be manifested, it seems like that's, that's, those two things. Dramatically cutting the time and bridging gap, bridging the different silos that cause things to get hung up to the, and it causes, like it's maddening from what I understand, like these, you know, like at Lockland Hill, the fire lane issue I've heard a lot about. And whereas in other cities, they're dealing with that and like it doesn't actually make the city all that much safer to have these extremely technical, like extremely rigid rules that cause things to get stuck. So to me, those would be the goals of, and still maintaining, protecting the public, having, you know, wonderful developments happen in the city. But that, and it seems like those two things we, we should do. And I agree, I didn't see that, either of those things addressed very robustly in this efficiency study. And that's just what I've heard, taking meetings, you know, like with dozens and dozens of specific examples. Like the Habitat meeting was really, and, and a lot of these folks, they're really good and they don't want to complain a lot. So they're put in a position where if they complain too much, then it feels like they're, like that can, that can clog the process even more because they're dealing with, you know, they want to be on a good footing, they don't want to be annoying and they don't want to be whining. And so they're, they're in this tough position because it feels like if they are a pain in the butt to NDS, then they can, sometimes it just makes it harder to deal with them. But so that, that increases the drag even more. So I think that all those things are what we should try to deal with at the policy level when we, when we do this.
I want to piggyback on, on Susan's point too, the fact that it's inefficient and, and time-consuming rewards those developers with the most resources.
Totally, absolutely.
Because if you don't have 18 irons in the fire and, you know, five projects that are coming on, making money immediately and you're trying to do one small one, you know, you're going to be burned out of, out of runway.
And what happened with this, with the development in Fight, like I don't know a lot about the one in Fightville other than what we heard and presented, but it seemed like that was a good example of fairly small. They'd spent a lot of money to get, to apply and then. then, and it was an affordable housing, and then there were technicalities that got, sort of got it stuck, and it's...
Oh, that's, that's a little complicated.
But if we, I mean, if we have, you know, community-oriented...
That was their experience.
Affordable-oriented projects, and I...
Well, and that's tied to a zoning ordinance that does not provide clarity as well. That was what, we had a meeting about that particular project, and so everyone's starting to game the system.
Anyway, Cherry?
Yes.
I have a little knowledge about this from a daily activity that I do during the day that pays the mortgage. So, it does come from a more clear zoning ordinance, and some clear leadership, and an easier plan that staff is able to follow, and actually know what to do. The reality is, I can't imagine working in the NDS department with it seems like competing interests. And that's what I do. So, we've got to get the comp plan fixed, and we have to get zoning, and we have to get the regulations, so that they're not competing against each other in the written language. I don't know how they look at a plan and decide what is supposed to go. But on top of that too, the public does hear what they want to hear. So, there are days, all day long, I can say, this is why, it doesn't match the ordinance, this is why, and if they don't want to hear that answer, I'm sorry, this doesn't match our zoning ordinance, it cannot go there, they're going to go out in the public and tell you what they want to tell you anyway, and say, and say, well, you wouldn't let me, and this is an affordable housing piece, and I've got one unit of 80% AMI, and I'm not saying this is, and so, there's also a certain point that we have to look at it and go, okay, there is a certain percentage that's just going to hear what they want to hear anyway, and go out. And we, all day long, review plans, and I'm not saying this is the entire development community, but all day long, we review plans and say, here's a list of things to address. And maybe 10 of the 20 get addressed, and then they come back. So, it does, it is a collaboration for everyone, including the developers. If there's a clear list of rules and regulations, there's a clear list of zoning, there's clear expectations in our comp plan, in our zoning, in our design standards manual, then everybody understands what is supposed to be done, and then staff can give a list to developers, this is what we need, the developers can address it or not, depending, and again, it is a developer-based thing, and then come back, and then it works. And then we have a clear guidance of what we do, and our planning commissions don't go till 2:30 in the morning. And then when it comes to you, you have a clear expectation.
And Almont County has a very clear organizational chart, it has really clear policies, and they have performance metrics. So, I'm just saying that there's, it helps to do these comparables.
Where our work doesn't need, you know, but we're always working to strive better, and I'm not saying it's perfect, by any stretch of the imagination, I'm sure there's people out there who say, you know, but, I can't imagine, I mean, I can't even read the ordinance from the city and sometimes understand what question to answer. I read ordinances all day for a living.
It's all related.
That's why I think it's so important that this planning commission really work hard to understand how the new zoning ordinance is crafted, we shouldn't have to rely on a lobbyist who's a former employee of the city to tell us why something was included or not included. We shouldn't be relying on he said, she said, kind of stuff. And I was a resident, following closely and participating in the last comprehensive rewrite, and there were a lot of errors, and it was, there was a lot of sloppiness in that work. And at a certain point, I guess, somebody got to a certain date, and it just got accepted. And so, we've spent all of those intervening years dealing with typos and all kinds of stuff, so it's really time to do it well, and for the people who are going to administer it, the council, commission, the staff, to understand it, and know it, and take ownership of it, I think that's really important. And then I have two other things I want to say. I want to push back on what Mr. Pao said, while I appreciate his comments, there are three words in that, neighborhood development services. Might put the emphasis on services, but it's very hard for people who live in neighborhoods, or just individuals, to get service out of this whole process, because it really is much more oriented to development. I came on this commission saying that the capital word was development, and I'm leaving the commission saying development. I have actually walked out of a meeting and heard a staff person say to the applicant, we won. If I had been from a neighborhood, or the person next door, I probably would have sued the city. Because, yes, the staff person is facilitating through this process and providing information, but should not be the advocate. And it often is that the staff person is an advocate, I don't know when that culture came here, maybe with the change in name of neighborhood development services, they feel like they're working for the developer, but they should be working equally for the whole community. I think that's really a problem. And then as a taxpayer, I would really like to know, what is the public cost of private development? Some of these projects that come to us, and we're always hearing about how the applicants are losing money, and time is money, and I understand that. But I think we, as taxpayers, are losing money as well, because some of these take a long time. If that development process is taking weeks, months, years, we are paying staff people to work with those applicants. So, I would really like somebody to track some projects and say, how many hours do we have this? I mean, I've been a consultant all my life, and I like to know what the billable hours are. So, if we were billing, what would it cost to get that project through?
But, that's a, it's hard to kind of assess that, if also we know that the process, be it because of an organizational issue, because of a disconnect between zoning and comp plan, or whatever, is taking an inordinate amount of time, which is, we're hearing from the development community agreeing, this is taking too long. When I look at the performance metrics at Almont County, and they do have a standard, it's done in three months. Our problem is, we don't, as Val succinctly said, we've got a problem if we get the system to work better and more functioning with the zoning that's really wrong for us.
But the messaging on that is huge. The performance metrics, if we put in place and say, staff, it's got to be done in three months. The definition of what done means is not mean, work for the developer, make sure you do whatever this means to get this development done.
Staffer, yeah.
Or make sure whatever, we need to get this done within the guidelines of what the comprehensive plan and the zoning boards we have.
All right, this has been great. Any other public comments? Nope.
I will be able to be planning commission out of session.
This is a very good discussion.
City council out of session.